Good evening. I'd like to call the Marion City Schools Board of Education regular meeting into session. Please stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Veronica, can you call the roll, please?
Mr. McKinnis?
Here.
Mrs. McKay?
Here.
Mr. Ratliff?
Here.
And before the superintendent's report, I would just like to make a few public comments and like to acknowledge Leslie Schneider has resigned. She did that effective March 21st, and I just want to say that, you know, her service to the district was commendable and we will miss her presence. Just a quick few things a little bit about me because a lot of you may not know. I'm a 1976 Harding grad. My husband graduated here in 1971. We have two children that graduated in 2007 and one in 2021. I have an undergraduate degree in secondary ed from the Ohio State University and a graduate degree in education from the University of Toledo. So why did I vote? Or why did I vote? Why am I on the board? Why do I feel compelled for service? And it's really my belief in a free public education. I love Marion City Schools and I love our kids. As president, I will promote kindness from the boardroom to our classrooms. In the last two months, I've taken several days of vacation leave from my job at Columbia State and I've visited all the schools and the bus garage. Here are just a few things I've seen. I've seen professionalism, passion, commitment, care for our students, engaged students and teachers, teachers' teaching and students' learning, laughter and tears. I know we are not a perfect district, but I am optimistic and have tremendous hopes for our district and more importantly, for our children. I ask for your kindness and grace as we do our work tonight. Thank you. Veronica.
Thank you, Kelly. Before I turn the mic over to Ben for his presentation tonight, he's going to be talking and focusing on the elementary literacy curriculum resource adoption. But before I do that, I know we have quite a few staff members in here that have really helped us along the way make this decision on the right curriculum resource for our students at the elementary level. So if you are a teacher here and you were involved in either the pilot or on the curriculum committee, will you raise your hand, please? I just really want to say thank you to you for the work that you put in. And I don't want to steal Ben's thunder in his presentation, but you know, this process probably started pre or almost probably during the pandemic as a result of the district's requirement to develop a new reading achievement plan that was submitted to the Ohio Department of Education for approval. And that same curriculum committee that ultimately ended up helping us choose the resource that we selected was involved from the beginning in that process of helping us write that reading achievement plan. And some of the things that we've benefited from so far as a result of that, many of you teachers, you've probably heard us talk about Hagerty and some phonics programs that we had. And really the success that we've seen through some of those, some of those programs for our students, our students are making great progress with those programs. And again, that was a result of that committee and the input given to us on, and we did the same thing with Hagerty. We looked at a pilot for some of those programs. We evaluated them and our staff chose that as the resource that would best suit our students and we're seeing the results for that. And so we appreciate that and so looking forward again to moving forward with this resource and hopefully we get the same kind of gains that we've made with our students like we did with Hagerty and some of the phonics programs that we implemented. So those are going to be two good compliments to the new reading program. Again, I just wanted to say thank you to all of those teachers and administrators and staff members who were involved in this process. It seems like it was a long time ago that we started and it also seems like it was just yesterday. So, so thank you for that. And at this point, I'm going to turn it over to Ben Porter. He's got a nice presentation he's going to give on the whole process.
Well, good evening. My name is Ben Porter and I am the Director of Teaching and Learning. This evening, we're going to be talking about the elementary literacy curriculum resource adoption process and really where we are in the recommendation we're making this evening. So I'm going to try and be as thorough and as concise as possible tonight. So there's a lot of things that we probably will not talk about that we've done, but we're just trying to give as best a picture in as little time as possible. And so Krista Denninger is also going to come out and kind of talk through the actual pilot process. So really where we're going to go tonight is talk about really what is curriculum? How did we actually get here? The development of the reading achievement plan and then the implementation of that plan? And then we're going to talk about the pilot process and the curriculum resource adoption process. We're going to kind of go through all of that just so you have a good idea of where we've been and where we are now. And then we're going to talk about what comes next after tonight. So what is curriculum? There's a lot of, if you ask everybody in this room, you might get a different answer from everybody. So just as a general overview, the Ohio Department of Education sets our, our learning standards. So what students pre K through 12 are expected to learn in the state of Ohio. As a local school district, we are tasked with identifying what resources we are going to use to teach those standards. And so tonight, that's what we're talking about. What resources for our K through five students will we be using to instruct them on those state standards? So how did we get here? This graph on the right is really, this shows that from 2012 through 2016, our reading achievement scores. And I couldn't pull off the state website, the one was 17 and 18, but it would continue that same trend in 17 and 18. So we looked at that and we had that downward trend. So we needed to do something about it. And when we started looking at what we were doing with literacy, we had some things in place, but there was really no clear plan for improvements around that. And then we also started looking at the alignment of our literacy resources and we had six different things going on in six different elementary schools. Not that any of them were bad, but there were just six different things going on in six different, six different elementary schools and we have a transient population. So we needed to talk about what, what do we do? How do we, how do we change this, the trajectory that we were on with our literacy, with our literacy scores? And so in the fall of 2018, we sent out a survey to the entire staff and we, and we asked, where are we with our literacy practices? Just to establish a baseline understanding of where we were. We were in lots of different places. And so we, at that point, decided we were going to form what was called a literacy committee. And that included representatives from every grade level and every building and every department in the district. We got together for an entire day and I know, I see a lot of faces out here that were there that day, where we talked about what, where are we as, as a, as a district with literacy? And at the end of that day, we really came away with, we need to spend more time in grade bands. And so we had, we broke into K-2, 3, 5, 6, 8, and 9, 12 grade bands and had a lot more conversations. And we really looked at everything through the lens of Ohio Department of Education's plan to raise literacy achievement. And that, that was eye opening to us as we sat down and looked at that, where there were some gaps. And so when we sat down and talked, there were a lot of common themes. So we got together, we spent an entire day together with each one of these, each one of these grade bands. And there were some common themes that came out of those conversations. And so you'll see a couple of charts that were there and we really, again, we looked through that lens of what are those five big, those five big areas of reading and where were we as a district? Where were we right then and then where did we need to be? What did we need to do to get this? And so based on that feedback, I'm not going to read all of those. You have those, you have those in front of you there. But based on that, we developed a draft of a literacy plan. And that really laid out where we were headed for the next four to five years. And we went out and we presented that to all of our staff at a staff meeting and asked for feedback on that. We then took that feedback, made some final adjustments and we finalized the plan. And then we identified, hey, what were those immediate needs? What do we need to do right now? What were those emergency things that we heard from those conversations with our staff? And at that point is when, and this is just kind of a timeline of what that school year looked like. Those immediate needs, and I'll talk about those in a second. The biggest one was phonemic awareness. So I'll get back to that in a second. Sorry, jumping ahead. So when we say reading achievement plan, we originally started calling it the literacy achievement plan, but the state came out and made a requirement for our reading achievement, that we have a reading achievement plan. And so we just changed the terminology from literacy achievement to reading achievement. Most districts were scrambling because there were only, there was a two-month window to create that in. We already spent a whole year developing it, so we were able just to change literacy to reading and we had a plan in place. There are four big goals that we have within, within the reading achievement plan. The first one is the alignment of tier one instruction. And that is really just about what, what are we doing? What does that focus look like for all students in the classroom? The second one was really multi-tiered systems of support. So what are we doing when students are struggling? What support, what specific supports do we have in place for those students? And then the Ohio improvement process, how are we, how are we talking about student achievement and how are we collaborating together to, to improve that, to improve how students are doing? And the last one was around community engagement. And that was really about engaging the larger community in improving our literacy scores across the district. So I'm just going to zoom through kind of where we were in 2019 to where we are now. So like I said, one of those most immediate needs that we had was around phonemic awareness, so learning letters, sounds and listening to those and students being able to identify those. And so our primary teachers began using a resource called Hagerty and our intermediate teachers began using a resource called equipped for reading success. So both of those were targeted for improving phonemic awareness of our students. We also started looking at the science of reading and really providing some professional development throughout the year around what that, what that meant. And also started the literacy academy, which established, which was established to really provide letters training to our, to staff who were interested in that. It's something we continue to do throughout, we've continued to do throughout all of this. We also started looking at standards-based grading. Our K through two work groups began, began working on identifying priority standards and developing proficiency scales. And then one of the other immediate needs that we heard was that, was handwriting and that our students, our students' handwriting was, needed drastic improvement. So we began a pilot of handwriting without tiers in two of the elementary buildings that were interested in that. In the spring and summer of 2020, then we, we talked about what, we looked at resources for phonics. And we also decided to shift to iReady as a universal screener away from NWA specifically because of the five big ideas of reading. And then we're able to make some intentional decisions to support students based on the outcomes of that, of that universal screen. And we did that one while we were all still quarantined virtually with a bunch of different BLTs, BLT members from all, from all the buildings. And so we're able to kind of do that one. I think we actually remember doing that one in July from, from my garage. So we all, so from there, we started using the decision rules and that was really established to support, again, specific outcomes from, that we were seeing from the iReady screener and what those specific needs were for those students. On the staffing side of things, we hired a district literacy trainer to really lead the implementation of the reading achievement plan. We had an additional intermediate literacy coach and we shifted support roles from program specific, so they were titled from, where they were teaching a specific program. It's just a general literacy support position so that we could provide them additional training and have more tools in our tool belt to teach those kids that were right in front of them. We also received two grants from ODE to support literacy and those were in birth through K and middle school. During the 2020, 2021 school year, this was, this was a year where we were hybrid, remote and everything in between. So we added some additional resources for instruction to support in-person hybrid instruction. We expanded our handwriting without tiers program to all of our kindergarten students and we started using phonics resources K through five. We continue to use that, those decision rules for that universal, based on that universal screener result. And then we also restructured the literacy block and added in intervention enrichment time for students. We continued that work around standards-based grading. Our three through five work groups started working on the same thing our K through two had done the previous year. And then we, we provided some staff development with letters training again. And we also added, we hired three intermediate literacy coaches and a middle school literacy coach in the, in the spring of 2021. So I just covered a lot of ground in a little bit of time, but I want, I'm going to ask Krista Denning, our district literacy trainer now, to come up and explain the pilot process, where we are, where we have been and where we're going to go.
So last school year with the reading achievement plan, that first goal is to align our tier one instruction to the five big ideas of reading. Those five big ideas of reading being phonemic awareness, phonics, fluency, comprehension and vocabulary. As Ben talked about, we had some things in place to help with those foundational skills of phonemic awareness and phonics. But our teachers were finding they didn't have the resources available to them as easily with those other areas within the five big ideas of reading. So just based on informal conversations as well as during meetings, some frustrations were shared from those teachers. So we realized that we might need to do something different to help support them within the literacy block. So based on that information, we sent out a staff survey to get input from them on whether or not they would like to have a common curricular resource for that tier one reading instruction. So when the results of the survey came back, it showed that about 93% of our staff wanted to move forward with a core reading curriculum. Of those 93%, over half of them, about 55% of them, they wanted to pilot a curriculum this school year and then implement next school year instead of the other option was to just go ahead and implement this school year. So based on the results of this survey, we decided to go ahead and start looking at curricular resources to pilot this year. So the next question is, okay, so what are those curricular resources that we want to pilot? So we looked at some different resources for that. We had been to the illiteracy academy that was put on by the Ohio Department of Education and there were some recommendations from some of those presenters. We also talked to Ohio's literacy leads, Michelle Eliot and Carolyn Turner in order to get some recommendations from them. We looked at ed reports to look at those programs that were rated highly effective, that were getting the green in all those areas. We also looked at curricular resources that aligned to the five big ideas of reading as well as Ohio's plan to raise literacy achievement. So we pulled that literacy committee together in order, for the purpose of reviewing those materials in that selection process. So the literacy committee last spring consisted of principals, it consisted of teachers, literacy coaches and some district administrators. So there's where the, the review and the selection of those curricular resources. When we looked at all of those components there, we came up with six different curriculums to look at. So we got the samples from all six of those companies. We set up times for those companies to share their materials so that all members of the literacy committee were able to, to see those presentations. We had the samples set up so the literacy committee can look through all those samples. And it was at this time that the teachers had asked if somebody else from their grade level could also be included for this selection process. So they had somebody to collaborate with, with their grade level as they were looking through those materials. So at that time, we added one more person from each grade level. So in total, we had two people from each grade level, K to five. We had all buildings represented. Each building had two people on that, two teachers on that literacy committee, one being a primary teacher, one being an intermediate teacher. So we could have the perspectives of that building, K-5. Our literacy coaches also went through the materials for each of the curriculum using a curriculum evaluation tool from the Reading League. This curriculum evaluation tool was recommended to us from Ohio's literacy leads. That curriculum evaluation tool kind of broke the, the program up or had us, had them looking at different areas like of the five big ideas of reading as well as implementation and writing and stuff. And they had some indicators for green flags and indicators for red flags. So they used that and they shared their findings with that literacy committee. So that committee having those, that information from the curriculum evaluation tool as well as information from the presentations and information from as they had themselves gone through and looked at the, the materials, they narrowed it down to two curriculums to pilot. One being a knowledge-based curriculum, which is CKLA, and the other being your anthology-based curriculum, which is Wonders. Piloting expectations were set and the principals shared those with their grade level teams to gauge interest in piloting. So once we had those grade level teams that were interested and we established who was going to pilot, we had, in each building, we had two pilots, one being Wonders, one being CKLA. One of those pilots were in the, in the primary grades, the other was in the intermediate grades. So that the advantage of having both of those pilots in each building was that teachers had the opportunity to hear about the implementation of each of those curriculums and see what it might look like within the classroom as well. So this school year, the ones the teachers received the materials, they began implementing those curriculums. They also have some training from each of the companies to help with that implementation. We had some monthly check-ins for those pilot teams. So we have some collaborative problem solving going on. On January 7th, Staff Development Day, each of those pilot teams presented information with their grade levels on different components of the curriculum. So they looked at like what the daily schedule would look like, what does a lesson look like, what do those resources look like, among other things too. They shared all that with those grade level teams. They were also able to share it within their classrooms. So the teachers not only heard the information, but they were able to see the materials, they were able to see what the student work looked like from each of those curriculums. We also gathered some feedback from our parent work group. Mrs. Lawson has a, a parent engagement group that she worked with each month. So I had worked with her to give some time to the parents so that they could hear about those materials, hear about each of those curriculums. There was a team from CKLA and a team from Wonders who shared information, very similar information that they shared with their grade level teams from January 7th. Those teachers went above and beyond, even invited those parents into their classrooms one day after school so they could see those materials as well too and talk to them more in depth and to see that, that student work with it. So I was present for all those things. I talked with the parents myself as well. I emailed them the next day, making sure that I heard them correctly with their feedbacks and that I was giving the correct information to that literacy committee to take that into consideration as well when they made that selection. This spring, in February, our pilot teams began to review the curriculum using that same curriculum evaluation tool that the coaches used last year. Having actually implemented it, they would be, better be able to see those green flags and red flags. I also worked very closely with Johnny Jackson in identifying some culturally responsive look fours. So the teachers were able to give input about how culturally responsive each of those curriculums were as well. We also gathered input from the staff. A Google form went out and all staff had an opportunity to share their thoughts about each of those curriculums. So within the selection process, the literacy committee reviewed all that feedback from the teachers who were piloting, from the parents as well as from the staff. They had looked at the data. Greg Menzies provided some growth data from fall to winter from iReady. And that data showed that our teachers who were piloting a curriculum, our students made more growth than those students in classrooms that were not piloting a curriculum. They had access to materials from each of this company. Anytime that each of the, either those companies shared materials with us, that was all put into a folder for access to teachers. The literacy committee had access to that as well. They had login so they could get online and see what that online component looked like for each of them. They looked at the ed report materials. They also had an opportunity to speak with the, with each of the pilot teams too, to ask questions, to help get some more information, to help make that informed decision. So once that literacy committee, they made their selection, and at this point, it was only the teachers who, and the principals who were making the, that selection, that voting. Twenty-one members, 13 of them believed that CKLA would be best for our students and teachers, which is about 61% of that literacy committee. So that decision then for, to make that recommendation for CK was shared with staff from Dr. Irucci on Friday, March 18th. So thinking about our next step, so with board approval, we're going to order those materials as soon as possible. One of the things we heard several times throughout this year is from the staff was regardless of which, which curricular resource we go with, teachers really wanted to have those materials by the end of the year so they could start to look through some things over the summer and start to prepare, prepare for next year. So we're also will have some initial professional development that's going to be provided at the end of this school year as well as at the beginning of next school year for those, the new staff members. We'll continue to provide that initial implementation professional development for all new staff members. We also need to develop a plan for some ongoing support as well as additional professional development. And another thing we heard from teachers too, is that they really wanted to plan across grade levels across the district too with the implementation of this program. And it, so we need a plan for what that's going to look like and really utilize those teachers who piloted each of those curriculums or that, that, the CKLA, you know, they have some expertise in that area that's going to help with that implementation for those other teachers there. And then we also want to have the opportunity to hear some teacher insight. So we have three teachers here tonight. Paige Pyatt and Mary Stevens were both on the literacy committee. Paige is a kindergarten teacher at GW. She also piloted CKLA this year. Mary is a literacy coach. She is split between, she's a primary literacy coach. She is split between GW and TACT. And then we also have Donna Axon here, who is a third grade teacher at TACT and she piloted
I was happy that Paige's name was first, so she would have to talk first, but I told her I would go first. My name is Mary Stevens and I've been a teacher and an instructional coach in Marion City for over 25 years. I've had some really good opportunities while being in Marion City. I've been both reading recovery trained, literacy collaborative trained twice, letters trained as well as any other opportunity I can take to better myself as an educator, I try to take advantage of. I was part of the original literacy committee. I've been part of the curriculum committee from the beginning and being part of that committee allowed me and the group to really dig into those different curriculums. Through the use of the curriculum evaluation tool that Krista talked about, we were able to review several of the programs and were able to narrow it down to the two that we piloted this year. Those two provided the most evidence of effective practices with alignment to the science of reading, along with the best fit for our district. Over the years, over the year, we had the monthly meetings in which we had great conversations, feedback and input from everyone involved in the process. Really, the two programs that we piloted were both good fits and the transition for us from the balanced literacy approach to the curriculum-based program, either one would have been a great fit. The teachers that piloted the program The teachers that piloted the programs did an amazing job at implementing and providing feedback on their respective programs. I really cannot say enough about the teachers who were part of this process. I was able to observe in almost every piloting classroom. Coaches and committee members all had the same opportunity. I have high regard for all the teachers that I observed, from the willingness to have observers to sharing thoughts and ideas, including struggles and accomplishments over the year. During this year of piloting, I have noticed that teachers were able to have a common focus during TBT time. The curriculum gave them a starting point for conversation while allowing them to dig deeper into the five-step process. The resources are available, so teachers are not spending their time searching for resources to support the academic content standards. I think planning has been more focused with a deeper level of understanding. Like I said, I really think either program would have been fine. But what I noticed during my observation of CKLA was how the students and the teachers were engaged and enjoying the content. With CKLA, we are teaching topics that we have not thought about teaching before and building amazing background knowledge while continuing to support the science of reading. It seems to me that CKLA gets kids and teachers excited about learning. I personally personally am very excited to grow students who love to learn.
All right, I'm Paige Pyatt. I have been teaching in the district for seven years. I'm a kindergarten teacher. And I, like Krista said, am on the literacy committee and also have piloted this year. And I just have had such great insight this year, having experience on both of those committees. Piloting within the classroom has been so much fun. With CKLA, the students just get such a great background knowledge, like Mary said. In our building, we have allowed students to have experiences that they probably wouldn't have otherwise. We brought animals in. We have talked about all different sorts of things. One of the units talks about trees, and I had a student one day go, "Mrs. Pyatt, the leaves are not on that tree." That is a deciduous tree, like they're five. So it's been really great and a lot of fun. So I just, this year has been a lot of fun being a part of all of this, and I'm really excited and look forward to being able to plan more with my team and really dive in. I've also been a part of science of reading, and so I see all of the things, a part of that curriculum, that are a part of the science of reading, too. So it's just been a lot of fun this year. And I actually was able to go over and take a look at the Wonders program also. So Mary allowed that this year and made that happen for me. So it's been a lot of fun this year, and I'm just really looking forward to it, so.
Okay, I teach littles, not bigs, so bear with me here. So I'm Johnna Axholm, and I teach third grade at Taft. This is my eighth year. And I had the honor this year to pilot the CKLA program in my classroom. CKLA is a knowledge-based language arts curriculum that teaches reading, writing, listening, and speaking skills through domains in history and science. My third graders this year have learned about the classic tale, "The Wind in the Willows", animal classification of vertebrates and invertebrates, the human body, including bones, muscles, joints, and the nervous system, ancient Romans, light and sound, the Viking Age, and right now astronomy. In all my years of teaching, I've never had students as engaged and enthusiastic about their learning as they have been this year. They come in in the morning excited to see what adventure we will take today. I'm not even sure they realize they're learning because we're just having fun. When we studied the Viking Age, the entire third grade got to go on a Viking voyage, where we went hunting for bilberries, fishing, collected wool, and built our ship in order to make it through our voyage. The students learned about rationing and having to work for what they needed. All of our reading and writing standards are embedded within these domains and taught repeatedly instead of being isolated and taught separately. Students are able to see how the standards build on each other and support our understanding of what we're reading and learning. One of the biggest things that our students at Marion City Schools are lacking is background knowledge. Many of our students don't see life beyond Fair Park, in my instance of Taft, so they don't understand that there's life beyond Marion, Ohio. I believe that once CKLA is in place, our students' scores will soar in not only language arts, but across the board due to the science and social studies-based units that will strongly build our students' background knowledge and vocabulary skills. To be honest, piloting this program this year has built my own background knowledge, and I'm sure I will get a couple more questions on Jeopardy right this year. It's so fun to learn and explore along with the students. I'm looking forward to continuing with this curriculum next year and already have a long list of ideas for each of the units, including virtual field trips, project-based learning, and many more. I truly believe that with this curriculum and the good teaching that our teachers are already doing, we'll see a jump in scores and much more engaging teaching. I'm so glad that the district had a process in place to really explore these curriculums in more depth. I'm excited for the opportunities that CKLA will bring my students. My personal opinion is that we will see great growth in our students because of the knowledge base this curriculum brings. Within our grade level, our third-grade team has been able to collaborate more effectively with student data and needs because we spend less time focusing on finding and creating resources and more time teaching and learning. As a pilot group, we knew going into the process that one of the risks was that our curriculum would not be chosen. We also understood that there's no perfect program that will meet all the needs of both teachers and students. However, we do feel that this curriculum is very adaptable and we can make the adjustments as needed. Lastly, I hope we do what's right for the students and teachers by having something in place and ready to go before the next school year begins. This year, due to shipping issues, we didn't receive our materials until mid-September, which made it very hard to get things in place and in a routine at the beginning of the year. Having a decision made tonight will help set our students and teachers up for success for the next school year. Thank you.
And real quick, before we wrap this up, I know Ron had you raise your hand, but if you piloted or are part of the literacy committee, could you please, could you please stand? Can we give them a round of applause? Yeah, I just want to say thank you to all of you. I know this has been a very extensive process for a lot of you, and some of you who piloted the Wonders, you will have to learn a whole new program. I know that that's a that's a whole, probably a daunting task to look at, but I just, we appreciate the time and effort that everybody has put in this this school year. So with that said, we're all done. Happy to answer any questions that any of you may have.
Thanks, Beth.
In the, I guess, in the Spring 2021 Literacy Committee, the slideshow shows there's twenty-three people, and then a year later, we got twenty-one. Could you explain to me where we lost two people?
So we had some teachers leave the district, and since we did not replace them, since they were not part of that beginning process, we wanted people in there from the from the beginning to the end, so we did not replace them with on the literacy committee. We had also included preschool at the beginning as part of those numbers as well, too. But preschool did not, was not one of those voting members within that.
But from, I think, what I was provided, it did not show six principals and five district administrators. I was given a list that had probably five principals and the rest were teachers.
For for last spring or for?
For the voting committee.
For the voting committee. So all six, we had six, all six building principals are on there. So the head principals were there from each of the buildings, with the exception of Harrison, since we have an interim. So the assistant principal was the voting member for that. We had two literacy coaches. We also had our literacy support teacher leader who was in that. She was probably included as part of the teacher numbers as well, too. We had two kindergarten teachers, two first-grade teachers, two second grade, two third. We had one fourth-grade teacher this year because the other teacher took a position somewhere else within the district. We also had one, or two fifth-grade teachers within that as well, too.
Okay, I guess I'm getting a little confused because we had twenty-three members, six principals, five district administrators on the original 2021 Spring Literacy Committee. When did that change to the voting committee being twenty-one with only six principals? When did the administrators fall off and we added teachers is what I guess I'm asking.
So as part of that selection process, I had said that when the the teachers had asked in the spring when they started looking at the materials, if we could add one more person from each of those grade levels to that. So there was the addition of the six there of the of the teachers. And then as far as like the voting, we wanted this to be purely a building decision, so that's why the district administrators did not vote.
Okay. And then of the voting members, how many piloted the programs?
We had two who piloted Wonders and we had two who piloted CKLA.
Okay, so there's four of twenty-one that actually piloted. The rest would have been getting materials as they went along and talking about them, correct?
Correct.
And did the curriculum committee have anything to do with this? Because I read the curriculum committee notes on agendas from September to February. They only talked about it on January and February. Were they involved at all?
So Krista reports out to our curriculum committee. So Krista was leading this. So at that point, that's just a report out and sharing with with our our board members that are on that committee.
But ultimately, when if whatever we adopt has to go through curriculum, right? When we implement it, it has to go through curriculum to go into the schools, right?
Correct, it goes through the teaching and learning department.
And if I'm understanding you, curriculum didn't have any say, it was entirely the literacy committee on the recommendation.
It is the literacy, the literacy committee. Do you want to explain that?
So we're talking about the curriculum committee, which is the superintendent advisory committee, which is two board members and then some of the teaching and learning folks that are there to give updates basically on what we're doing to the board members so that they know as we go. And then we have report outs at every board meeting on those different committees. So it just depends on where we're at within that process, you know, to update that committee along the way. But they, I'd have to go through all of the agendas over the last couple of years.
Yeah, I guess my question is not necessarily you have to look through the agenda. I'm saying, did the curriculum committee have any input to the literacy of what they would like to see? Or were they involved at all, or was this a hundred percent recommendation from the literacy committee?
I don't, I don't think, no, I wouldn't say that the literacy committee, and you're talking about the board members on that.
I'm talking what we just seen, the twenty-one votes that we got a recommendation with straight.
Okay, I'm confusing the advisory literacy, because we have the, yeah, the curriculum committee, which is the board advisory committee to that.
Okay, but I'm saying the literacy committee, the twenty-one, I guess, teachers and administrators are who we got the recommendation from. It didn't go from curriculum or curriculum didn't have any input or anything like that.
No, not.
And there was no members, from what I saw, of the curriculum administration or anything on the actual committee?
We sit in on each one of those, on those meetings, just because we're not part of the committee doesn't mean.
I'm not a voting member, but I sit in all the literacy committee. I'm assigned to the literacy committee as a board member. Well, I'm trying to figure out if our curriculum department or what we have here is looking in to what literacy is doing, saying, "Yeah, we can do that, no, we can't, yeah, we can't," you know, that sort of thing. If they had any input at all on this process, or are they just a fly on the wall, so to speak?
Certainly asked questions during curriculum committee meetings. And but we didn't have a vote, and the curriculum committee doesn't vote. It's an advisory committee, as Dr. Irucci said.
I was just shocked that only two meetings talked about it and we piloted, so I wasn't really sure what role they played, if any, and apparently none, so.
We talk about literacy in every single one of those curriculum committee meetings. There's just an update on the pilot process in those updates.
Yeah, it was only an update, I understand that, but it's only an update from January eighteenth and fifteenth of February, which I didn't get marched, but I was kind of shocked that we're piloting from the beginning of the year, basically September to February, and curriculum only comments twice out of the whole year about the new piloting that's going on at the elementary school. But, you know, I, you know, I'm not part of those meetings, so. Yeah, I understand, thank you.
Just as far as the curriculum is concerned itself, from the the comments made by the committee members, and again, thank you so much for the time that you've put in, myself never having taught reading at this level, definitely encouraged by so many people at the end stating, hey, either one of these, you know, they they definitely had to make a decision, it appears. But happy with we're moving forward with something, as you said earlier, Ben, across the board and, you know, some continuity between all the buildings. In turn, what caught my attention was the grade band meetings, K through two and three through five, correct? Okay. Was it considered at all that perhaps, and this is just the way I'm seeing it, and I'll be completely transparent here. I got to visit one classroom that was piloting Wonders, but I've probably had more conversations with teachers who piloted CKLA. It appears to me that based on the the background knowledge, that seems to be the strongest point that gets brought up over and over and over again concerning CKLA, with perhaps a weakness in writing. That was kind of alleviated a little bit with a recent conversation I've had that maybe that people are looking at it a little differently and that we could address that. Wonders dealing more with truly, I guess, traditional approach to reading, getting kids to love reading. Again, I've never taught this, so I'm probably offending some people with those comments. But perhaps a weakness with the phonetic awareness, okay? But then they also mentioned, well, we've got Hegarty, too, which can also supplement that. Getting to my question, was it ever considered that perhaps one of these programs is better suited for the primary levels, be it K through two? And I say that just because I wasn't sure where the division would be, but since that's the grade band thing. Was it considered that one would be better for the primary and the other could be for the intermediate? I'm asking that question, whether that discussion was had or not.
I'll let you take that one. But what I will say is that no curricular resource is perfect.
No, I agree, and that's, that's reflected in the teachers and the administrators' comments, too. So I appreciate everybody's honesty in terms of strengths and weaknesses, that was very helpful.
So, no, we didn't, I mean, in all honesty, we did not talk about that. But there are two different types of resources, one being that knowledge-based, one being that the anthology-based. And I think it would be hard to go from one to the other because it's, they're two very different approaches. And I think that, you know, whether we did, you know, one in the, you know, when we transitioned from that primary to intermediate, it's like those students are going to have to learn a whole new different type of curriculum all over again. And they're not going to have that background knowledge that they're expecting them to have from those prior grades as well, too. So thinking about that vertical piece, that vertical alignment and the continuity for our students and for our teachers, I I don't know that that would be a good choice for that.
Does that same concern exist with the transition from fifth grade to junior high?
No, I think that the biggest thing that when talking to the middle school teachers and talking to our literacy coach is, one of the biggest struggles that they've seen at the at the middle school is that complex text, or students are not used to seeing complex text to that degree. So within either of Wonders or CKLA, they're going to have exposure to more complex text, which is going to help with that transition from fifth grade to sixth grade.
Thank you.
I would add to that, to that, too, that the the knowledge-based curriculum and the emphasis is placed on science and social studies all through was one of the areas that we thought was important. When you get to the middle school, of course, there's separate classes for science and social studies, too. So that transition is a little bit different from there. But, and I've heard those conversations actually about Wonders maybe being, you know, would that be more appropriate for an intermediate setting as opposed to? And I think, you know, you probably could have that discussion, but I think overall, what people were saying was that consistency up through there and kids gaining that background knowledge and then being able to scaffold that as they get through, those would be a little bit easier on them. But it's different, you know, going to the middle school then because you have those separate classes.
Is there a specific Wonders curriculum at Grant right now, or is it a Wonders-affiliated curriculum?
It's affiliated.
It's affiliated, so Wonders and Study Sync are both, but McGraw-Hill. So there are, there are some, there are some similarities, like instructional routines and things like that, but.
And actually, McGraw-Hill has two elementary curriculums, too.
McGraw-Hill also has an open court, which the literacy committee looked at and they eliminated at the beginning there, too. So, no, they, so they're both McGraw-Hill. They have different approaches within it. So within Wonders, they have several units that they they look through, whereas like at the middle school, they have like four themes that they look at throughout the year. So the the structure is different. There's some similarities within the instructional routines, but the. So the the structure is different. There's some similarities within the instructional routines, but the the approach to it is a little different.
And with with the with the vote, were you guys during the vote, were they given cost? Like doing a cost analysis of these two, or they just given the actual vote program?
No, no, upfront, you know, before we even went down this path, we we knew that we had enough. We wanted to make sure we had enough budgeted because we weren't going to have our staff pilot something and then say, hey, we don't have the money for it now. We so we budgeted for it. We knew we could purchase either one of these programs so that we could honor whatever whatever our staff decided was the best fit for our students and our district.
And as presented to the board, how close is the program that we piloted versus what is being presented to us? Because they're from first, from estimation to estimation, about a week off, I I got a difference of about almost six hundred thousand dollars.
Correct.
So, you know, normally, I I think the citizens of Marion and normally anybody who gets a bid for one point one six four million dollars. And then the next week, they're given a bid for five hundred and some thousand dollars. Either one, they're getting ripped off. That's number one. Or number two, we're cutting a ton out of it. Or three, it's both. So which one is it?
So when we when we do any contract, what every time, you can ask anybody who's ever worked with me. Every time that that third-party vendor is going to give you a a number that I'm going to say there's no way we're going to spend that with you. And they will they will negotiate down. It's somewhat like buying 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 a car. In all honesty, in that negotiation with working with those vendors. And so with this one, you'll see in the in the wonders quote, there is, they gave us the discounts to start with. CKLA did not build in those discounts to start off with. So then, once I had, once we had a conversation with them, they then built in those. We were able to have specific conversations around, hey, this was not something that we that we piloted or this was something that we needed to talk farther about and talk through. And they always, and the other thing that has happened in the past as well is when we go to do these contracts, they will add additional numbers in on top of what we actually need. And then you end up with a surplus of materials that are just sitting there and not being used that we paid for. So we got the numbers back down to where they should be. And we also negotiated down some of the some of the pricing to get us down to that number.
But with all due respect, wonders gave us the price without us asking.
Correct.
The other one, you had to go renegotiate because they tried to rip us off for half a billion dollars more, right?
Correct, but again, it's it's about the rep you're working with.
And what they gave us originally and what you're presenting to us has been cut. Materials are out. We got less materials, right?
It will give everything that our teachers piloted, everything that they have said they needed in their classroom is what we're purchasing.
Why would why would somebody give us more than what we actually asked for? I mean, I have a a big problem in looking at stuff like this, thinking that we piloted one and we're giving the teachers two. So we doing a bait and switch on the teachers. So we pilot something. And then when it comes to giving the teachers something, we give them something else. Because this, there's no way someone would have misquoted you six hundred some thousand dollars unless they were trying to rip us off. Which I don't know why this district would do business with someone trying to rip us off. But I'm saying, when I look at the example number one versus example number two, there's materials cut out. And when I look at CKLA versus wonders, it seems wonders has a writing section in it and CKLA does not. Is that true?
CKLA has the writing built into the program. So they have a CKLA has a has a standalone writing program that's separate from from that. That was added into the quote. And so that's what you're seeing in that quote.
And as you said in front of the board then, then we, these teachers are going to have a writing component to CKLA that they will not have to supplement? Is that what I'm hearing?
Well, I'll let you speak to that. But but at the end of the day, they are getting everything that they used in their classroom.
I appreciate you trying to do a bait and switch on my questions, sir. What I'm asking is. What I'm trying to ask is if they are going to get the writing materials, because this is a lot of money, okay? And this is a direction our district's going to take for six years or five years. And and some of the people, kindergartners, this might be the only curriculum they know, okay? So it's a big decision for this district. What I'm asking is, are the teachers getting what they need or will they have to supplement as to the writing portions of CKLA?
I do believe that that teachers are getting what they need. They are getting everything that our teachers piloting got. The writing studio that's listed in there is a separate component. It, I mean, you can use it as a supplement. You don't have to. When I asked the rep about that, she said that she said that the there's already enough writing within CKLA and she would not recommend it because it would be too much writing. It would be writing overkill. So could writing be one of those areas we might need to do a little bit of supplementing? It could. I mean, like you said, with both programs, nothing is perfect. We would have had to do some supplementing in a different area within wonders. So it's just, you know, it just depends on each of those programs. However, we, one of the PDs that we will be getting with that is specifically for the teachers is on writing to help with that writing instruction in it. We also have some things from literacy collaborative, some of those good things that we did within writing workshop that our teachers already know that they can all, they can use in order to help with that writing process. And that's one of the things that our kindergarten teachers who piloted that they did. They took things that they already know about writing from from literacy collaborative and embedded it within there to help make that work for them too. So they just add it on to it.
With all due respect, if I'm spending six hundred thousand dollars approximately, we shouldn't have to supplement or ask the teachers to go find things to supplement if we're having a literacy and a writing program.
So I I'll speak to that. Every every single curriculum that I've ever been involved with needs some supplementation to it. Because it's, it depends on, you know, your your student's ability level. It depends a lot on their background, those types of things. There are, you know, canned packages that are out there that, and that's kind of why for a minute back in the day, they decided to go away from canned packages and take a look at a lot more flexibility, which is what literacy collaborative provides. But in our situation, it just really didn't work for us because of, there's a whole bunch of reasons you can point to for that. But every one of those programs has to be, and 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 even I know in conversations with some folks with wonders this year that they actually cut out a couple of units here and there because, and they had to supplement because of the content they didn't feel was appropriate. So that's going to occur at any point in time when you're dealing with curriculum.
Do you know what we would need to supplement with wonders?
Yep, based on teacher input, they, we would probably need to sup, we would need to supplement those foundational skills. Specifically, the the phonics, they didn't feel like it went deep enough within the wonders curriculum in order to get to truly meet our students' needs with that. We already had the the Hegarty supplement, which they, you know, they continue to use, so they would continue to use that. But the it's a foundational skill specifically in the primary.
And the other thing you'll have to supplement with wonders is the science and social studies extracurriculum that goes along with that. Because that's kind of built into there in the CKLA, there would have to be a supplement to be able to do those. And I know we currently do some science and social studies weekly. We use some of those supplements as a result of literacy collaborative. So you're getting that and and, you know, I always thought that the knowledge-based curriculum was a good idea because we don't do well in science and social studies either. But to have that built into that resource, I think, is also important. So you get science and social studies with CKLA, you might have to do supplemental writing with some of that. But you don't get science and social studies with wonders and you may have a little bit more writing. So that's that's kind of where I was at when I took a look at that.
I guess while we're on the topic and since it was, I was going to wait till later when we actually had the discussion, but since we're up here. And and I don't know, Dr. Iresi, this came in the email that you sent, but Ben, you may have been the one that put this together. So whomever can best answer this question. You had mentioned, we also adjusted the quantity needed. We're talking about the activity books right now. For each grade level to accurately reflect what our class numbers are currently, correct? So looking through, and again, I appreciate that because as as it says, that, you know, you don't want a bunch of stuff sitting around in closets, not getting used. And that makes sense. And if you buy it, you can't send it backwards. You can always order more. Kindergarten, I guess this is also getting to what Mr. Ratliff said, is just to make sure that the teachers do know what has been cut. For kindergarten, the activity books goes from twenty-three hundred and ninety. We lose thirteen hundred, almost fourteen hundred, down to one thousand. And I guess if that's the projected five-year total, but then we get to grade two. We go from twenty-three hundred and ninety activity books down to six hundred and eighty-one. Is that a projected number for five years worth of second-grade students? I'm asking. That just, that was the more, the most drastic of the grade reductions. That's the reason why I call attention to that one.
So how that they got the the current numbers that are on there is I looked at our current numbers within across the district for our our students and added ten percent on to it. So that's how they got those current numbers to be able to reduce those numbers. So when we do order materials, that's typically how we look at, we look at our current numbers, add ten percent for any students who might move in. We always want to have a couple on he, extra on hand for those those move-in students as well too. So that's how we got the current numbers, so that we're not, to prevent that overspending. And while that might fluctuate from year to year, some years we might have more than that, that we'll be able to keep those materials for that following year when we might be a little bit lower too. So we'll have a little bit of that 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 fluctuation within it. Kindergarten, hard to tell, you know, what kindergarten numbers are going to be. So those are just based on this year's numbers, but our.
Is there a reason or a guess as to why second grade just sticks out like a sore thumb?
Uh, well, just our our first grade numbers are lower this year.
All right, gotcha.
So that's that's why. I think, but believe those current, those uh, those numbers originally were were overestimated. Within it, they might have looked at like twenty-five, thirty per classroom or something, if I remember correctly. So I think that's might have been where they had gotten those numbers, if I remember correctly.
Okay.
And Scott, second grade the next year were the kindergarten students from kind of the COVID period where we had kindergarten across the country, numbers were way, way down. So that's what you're seeing in that second grade.
Gotcha. Mr. Ratliff, did you have anything?
No, I'm good.
I just might as well get it all out. This will probably be my last topic for this, I guess. And I want the staff to understand that, you know, I understand that there is a time crunch here. I know what it's like to want resources, to have a new curriculum and to implement it and have time to find out, what am I going to use? What am I not going to? So I've done that. I do have an issue, and this gets back to what I've said before, in terms of representing the community that voted me into office. In terms of some of the content, and I understand background knowledge has been the the number one, most often recommended strength of CKLA. When you get into fifth grade, one of the sources that is used is Shakespeare, Midsummer Night's Dream. Having taught AP government, I I wonder how the juniors and seniors in Harding High School would handle Shakespeare, let alone ten and eleven-year-olds. So to me, and I I'm all for setting the bar high, you know, standards are are great and they they can be achieved. We met with a college soccer coach who wants the entire team to have a three-point-five GPA, which my wife and I thought was great. But to teach Shakespeare to fifth graders, I think is, even with the content, I think can be inappropriate. That being said, and this was drawn to my attention from three different people. The fourth grade to use, and we're talking nine and ten-year-olds. And this is where you see across the country, school board members being questioned, did you approve this this book? And with a yes vote, they did, but they may not have known what curriculum was included in that. But people have mentioned the book, and I I understand excerpts only, but The House on Mango Street to be introduced to fourth graders, we're talking nine and ten-year-olds. I I don't agree with that, and I understand, well, we're not going to read those parts of the book. But that was one of the things I heard from wonders is that there's a focus on the authors and the books and the and you said the anthology focus, correct, that approach. And when you talk about, and I, the way, you know, students are going to work, and and you could say what you will about Spark Notes and for my generation, Cliff Notes, but also lit charts. I just did a quick search, you know, if our kids are going to be looking things up to do their their answers. And you get into this description, Esperanza being the the main character. And then you hear about her friend Sally and the number of references to, let's just get out here and say in terms of romance and sex and abuse. Her best friend behaving provocatively, wanting to, you know, and one woman mentioned something about that's she's the kind of girl that will go down an alley with a boy. I honestly, I don't think the community would appreciate me voting that for nine and ten-year-olds to be introduced to that type of material. And I didn't know if you're the two to address that or if you even knew that that was part, yeah, that's, that I've, I gotta admit, that's a concern.
So the things that you brought up within that book itself, you know, I've read that piece of it, you know, for fourth grade. And none of that was brought into it. None of those are in those vignettes that were pulled from it. While, yes, you know, typically our older students might look at that book as a whole, the vignettes that they pull from that, you know, the readability, the content, you know, they're more fourth-grade appropriate within it. There might be some refer, I I also think that one of the concerns that was brought up that maybe it wasn't, uh, maybe there there are some things in there that might be offensive to some groups of people. I think that that gives us an opportunity to work with Johnny Jackson, our DEI supervisor. How do we work that? Is the, you know, you know, has he looked at to see whether or not that's appropriate? Is there a way we can approach it and and stuff?
Somebody had mentioned that to me with with baseball, with, you know, the the Major League Baseball and the Negro leagues, as they used to be called. And to me, as a high school, that was be, that'd be not, like you said, a great opportunity. My concern, and and even that being a comfortable, a teacher comfortable with that content, having not taught elementary, I think I could still handle it. And I know that depends on the teacher and and everything else. But again, in terms of this, that's, and I know it's the vignettes that are taken out and it's the excerpts. But if you really turn a kid on to a book or an author, they don't want vignettes, they don't want excerpts, they want the whole thing. And then they go home and mom and dad, what are you reading? And that was one of the the big concerns I had. But again, Shakespeare as well. We know those of who have read Shakespeare, we know the content of that, so.
So I've started reading the Midsummer's Night Dream. I have not gotten through all of that yet.
Gotcha.
So I I can't speak fully to that, but I've read so far, I think it seems appropriate. And how they approach it too, you know, because it might be harder content. They give a summary of that act and scene first, so the students have a better understanding of what it is.
It's difficult, yeah.
Yep, so that they have some understanding, some background knowledge of it, as well as some of that vocabulary ahead of time before they actually get into it. I've not compared, I just had a teacher emailing me about this today, actually. And I've not compared it like to the original to see if the language is the same yet or the all the acts and the scenes are. Or if it's just different pieces, just based on what I've seen so far, I'm not certain that all of it is there for that.
And that's what I'm just, if we have teachers that are uncomfortable approaching some of this content, I feel that it should at least be discussed.
I know, and I I don't disagree with you. I think that we need to pull in our resources within the district. I think we need to, if we have some material in there that people might be uncomfortable with, I think we need to use our resources, whether it be like Johnny Jackson, whether it be, you know, some of our our SE, you know, if it's an SEL thing, maybe it's Kathy Butler we look into. How do we approach this with kids too?
Yeah, that's because we're talking trauma and everything in that word, it's.
I think we did that at the beginning of the year, right? And I think there was a few, like I said, a a couple of units even in wonders that we looked at and had some conversations about, is it appropriate for this time?
Well, that, yeah, that was CKLA. And one of it had to do, like, it was a personal nearness. And so there were some things within that that the teachers who are comfortable dealing with our current times had this, some of those things that there a couple of years ago probably wouldn't have been as big of an issue, but one was about a personally, about like someone going to pull you a vaccine and stuff. So given our current situation with the vaccines at the beginning of the year, they just didn't feel they wanted to approach that. You know, maybe a couple of years down the road, that might be very appropriate to use. But I think a part of it is just our tons and where they're at now. But I think for those things, we need to, you know, if those teachers have or uncomfortable with something, I think we need to bring that up to our, you know, maybe it is something we we switch out a little bit and do something different with that too.
Okay, thank you for that.
Ted had a comment.
I, to your point, Scott, Mr. Porter offered all of us to come in to meet with him individual. And I think Kelly and I took advantage of that opportunity to talk with him, and that topic came up. And I think you said that CKLA was more than willing to adjust its curriculum to pull out things or to meet our our local standards. Is that what we we talked about there at that time?
No.
No.
Go ahead.
And I also thought that there was so much content that teachers could select something else.
And and I also on that point, I think we talked about in our our meeting that equity and inclusion was a big part of making sure that we adopted the one that was most suitable to meet the diversity of our student population. And I think CK, CKLA met that requirement, that it it's very good on equity and inclusion.
So, and I did talk to the rep, too, like, you know, like you had said, Mr. Guinness, about, um, if there's contribucial topics, how does CKLA approach those things? And they said that they would work with the districts around those things, too, if they felt that there was something inappropriate. We've also heard good things, you know, I've seen online good things from different teachers who do use those different, those, you know, like The House on Mango Street, like you're talking about, and the kids really enjoy it. So I mean, there are some districts who are using that stuff to success, with success as well, too.
But getting to Ted's point that they'll cut out curriculum, if the curriculum is kind of what Scott's saying, which is about sexual abuse and stuff like that, why are we dealing with companies that think it's okay to put that in fourth grade curriculum? I don't, I don't know what district across the country would be okay with that. I mean, we shouldn't have to approach them and say, "Please take that out," because my daughter is constantly on the internet. So if she, if she types that in, she's not going to get approved curriculum from CKLA, she's going to get House on Mango Street, boom, 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 boom. And all the reviews and everything it talks about, YouTube videos on it and all kinds of stuff. I mean, that's what we're setting ourself up for if we're dealing with a company that does that. If, if all that is correct, he is, they go onto something saying excerpts, I mean, if you turn a kid on to something, they're going to go find more of it. It's not like back in my day, you'd have to go to the library and pull Dewey Decimal System and find the book. I mean, not many people would do that, but you're going to sit around and be on the computer and try to look stuff up because it's instant access. So that, I mean, it's just concerning, is, I don't, I don't know how to address that, but it's very concerning.
So I think that's also some, you know, parent communication that we can have as well, too, so that parents are aware of that. You know, if this, you know, we, they teach that, I think the parents do need to be aware of that, so that they can, you know, see if their student, if their child is trying to get that book, you know, because the vignettes that are pulled out, none of those, the specific things that you're talking about are within the vignettes. But I understand the concern, too, as well as, you know, maybe a child will want to go out and find that book to read more about it, too. But I think that that comes, part of it comes down to communication with parents as well, too.
Was that part of the discussion communicated with the parent committee that was put together or not?
Um, I don't-
And that's, I wasn't part of that, but I, you know, Lesley and I went to go meet with Greg Menzies and looked at the data between both, and as you had already mentioned, that both pilot, both piloted programs showed better results in those classrooms that had not been piloted, correct? So we spent about an hour, Ron, you stopped at the end of that, too, so.
Alright.
That's all I've got for now.
Thank you, Ben, thank you, Krista, and congratulations, Ben, new baby.
Yeah. I think I just want to say that in all my years of being on the board, this was one of the most thoroughly researched and thoroughly care, and carefully. The process was just something that amazed me in terms of all of you taking part in that and getting us the information. And it's been sort of a joy to watch from the literacy committee that I sat in on to hear the discussions, and you're all to be commended for that, it was something.
It really was, and thank you, all of you. Alright, we're going to go to the treasurer's report. Motion to approve Board minutes from two fourteen, two twenty-four, three one, and three seventeen, do I have a motion, please?
So move. One second.
Discussion? Call the roll, please.
Mr. McKinnis?
Yes.
Mr. Weidling?
Yes.
Mr. Ratliff?
Yes.
Mrs. McKay?
Yes. Uh, financial approvals. Uh, motion to approve the financial items as presented below, financial report in February, checks and fund balances. Do I have a motion, please?
So move.
You have a second?
Yeah, a second.
Discussion? Please call the roll.
Mr. Weidling?
Yes.
Mr. Ratliff?
Yes.
Mr. McKinnis?
Yes.
Mrs. McKay?
Yes. Alright, we come to the hearing of the public.
Say, motion carried.
Motion carried, sorry about that. I will get this down eventually, it'll probably be at the end of January or December, but I will try. I'm not going to read all of this, because I know you guys value your time, and so I'm going to read a few things. The Board of Education recognizes the value of school, to school governance, of public comment on educational issues, and the importance of allowing members of the public to express themselves on school matters of community interest. Public participation is a time set aside for the board to listen to public comments, but it is not intended as a time for dialogue. The board offers public participation to members of the public in accordance with the procedures below. The board applies these procedures to all speakers and does not discriminate based on the identity of the speaker, content of the speech, or viewpoint of the speaker. And then I'll just add, please remember, this is a meeting of the board in public, it is not a public meeting. Each person gets three minutes, I will set a timer, because it's just easier for me to keep track and not be rude. So I do have your cards here or your papers, and I do know Kathy Walzac wanted to speak, and I promised I would call on her first. Yeah, that'd be great, Kathy, good to see you, thanks for coming.
Let me turn it on.
Is it on?
Sure, you can do my name. Two weeks and two days ago, I had the privilege of spending time with some Harding students, and I went home and broke down because I was so impressed, it was so nice to be around those wonderful students. And I wrote it all out, and I'll just read, and then it's short. I had the pleasure of playing the piano for the Harding Concert Choir and symphonic mentors at the OMEA Large Group Contest at Bell Mountain High School on Saturday, March twelfth. I wanted to let you know some of the wonderful things I observed. First on my list is behavior. Contest involves a lot of lining up, waiting, walking through hallways, and repeating the above. The Harding students were quiet and respectful throughout this process. Of course, their director, Mrs. Rollins, had laid out her expectations for them ahead of time, so I knew they would be good, but this was really impressive. Second on my list is the kindness and camaraderie I observed. At a time when many adults in society are having trouble getting along, I watched students helping each other with robes, bow ties, crutches, heart singing, and lyrics. I would give Mrs. Rollins credit for creating a climate of acceptance, kindness, and helpfulness within her choirs. These teenagers displayed the best of what high school students can be, and I haven't even described their musicianship yet. Moving on to that third item, musicianship, and some background to explain what qualifies me to speak on it. I'm a graduate of Bowling Green State University with a bachelor's degree and a master's degree in music education. I taught elementary music in the Marion City Schools for thirty-two years, and also assisted in the choral department at Harding for many years. And I'm feeling really old, because when I came in, I've seen so many former students that I had in elementary school, and it's like, oh my goodness, where did they years go? I have also sung and directed and accompanied many choirs in my life thus far. I can honestly say I wish Jamie Rollins had been my high school choir director, amen, that is the truth, and I almost throw my, mine under the bus, but yes. She is teaching her students vocal choral technique that I didn't learn until I got to college. I am still learning new things about vocal technique as I observe her rehearsals with her choirs. She engages the students physically, helps them find the emotion and expression in their music, and challenges them to critique and correct their own performances. She's a master at using analogies to explain musical concepts, and very good at explaining the why behind the things she's teaching them. Mrs. Rollins is a valuable asset to Harding High School, and she gives her students a strong foundation for success in music and life. And this is not written down, but I was very proud to be part of the Harding group that day, to be with those students and with Jamie Rollins. It was just fantastic.
Thank you. Thank you, Kathy. Lindsey Smith. Go.
My name's Lindsey Smith, and I'm a teacher at Taff Elementary. I'm also born and raised resident of Marion, and a proud two thousand and three graduate of Marion City Schools. I have taught at Taff for ten years and look at the staff as my family. This year's been tough when it comes to student assaults on teachers. We have nine teachers who've been physically assaulted by a student, where two of our teachers have been assaulted by the same student multiple times. That does not include the near misses, where the teacher has moved quickly or the child has just had a bad aim and missed. Assaults consist of teachers being kicked, hit, slapped, and even backhanded in the face. I'm upset about having this happen to my family. In the ten years I've worked at Taff, I have never seen anything like this. My family is supposed to come to school and feel safe, just like the students. These teachers shouldn't have to worry about saying the wrong thing, turning their back to walk away, or worry about being assaulted by a child. I'm very frustrated at the lack of support that we as teachers have received, not from our administrators in the building, but by the higher-up administrators. They're aware of this occurring, and not one of them has came into our building to even ask, "Are you okay? What can I do to help?" Nothing at all, just a head turned and the other, a head turned the other way, and it's like out of sight, out of mind. We've been told, "Well, it's happening everywhere." Okay, well, I understand that, but it's happening here in Marion City Schools. What are we doing to help these students and staff? I've also been told that these students have been through trauma. Yes, I'm aware of that, and I'm deeply sorry, sorry that they have to deal with that, but what about us? What about the teacher who has been assaulted once or twice or even multiple times? What about their trauma now? Also, what about these students who have not been through trauma, who now have been because they have seen their peers assault their teacher? We have to do better. Also, teachers do not want to stay at Marion City Schools and have a constant turnover. I see why. Teachers and administrators come and go, but these students are here in, day in and day out, year after year. How are we helping them and our staff? I can tell you what isn't helping, is putting a Band-Aid over the situation and making an excuse for why they did what they did. They need consequences. Assaulting someone outside of school results in severe consequences. So what are we teaching our students, that it's okay? What are we saying to our staff, that it's okay to be assaulted? Again, no. If a teacher put their hands on a student, we wouldn't have a job anymore, we'd have consequences. Why? Because it's not allowed. Our teachers should feel safe at work. So please don't tell me that training will help, that PAX will help. Again, no. These are tier-three kids, and they need more than that. Our teachers need more than that. Thank you.
Dana Lane?
I'm Dana Lane, and I've worked at Taff for four years. Before this year, I've had no problems with students, and I was able to control behavior issues in the classroom. I've been told that it shows that I have good behavior management, especially when I'm out for the day. This year has been extremely difficult with behavior. October was the first time I was assaulted by, because a student was crawling on the floor and running around the room, which was distracting my other students. I called the office, and the student didn't want to go. Instead, the student threw himself on the floor and proceeded to hit and kick me when I tried to get the student out. After this incident, the student has assaulted me four other times for a total of five times, October, November, December, February, and March. In February, the assault consisted of the student throwing books, pencils, tubs, backpack, and then hitting me. I have such bad anxiety about seeing the student after all these incidents that it makes it hard to come to work on a daily basis. This student has finally transferred to another classroom, but hasn't stopped. I had recess duty, and the student spotted me on the playground. The student ran in a big circle and got closer each time. I told three other teachers I was scared. The student ended up coming after me, and an aide and another teacher had to step in between us to stop the student from attacking me. During this incident, I had no contact with the student. The student purposely came after me. I was physically shaking after this happened, and had to go finish the day in my class. Now I have an aide that watches my classroom in the morning from the hallway to make sure that this student doesn't come into my classroom. And he is with me while I'm on lunch duty to make sure the student doesn't come near me. You could say that I have a bodyguard just to be able to do my job, a first-grade teacher. Even the Friday before spring break, I had to leave lunch duty because the student was glaring at me. Every day I have to make sure that I'm not going to be attacked when I come to work. I have major anxiety about coming to work, I have questioned whether or not I want to be a teacher at all. I wonder if this is where I want to be next year, and I have always loved being in the classroom, having fun with my students, and teaching. I worry if or when I will get hit again. I'm a single mom of three young children after leaving an abusive relationship, after dealing with this student, and makes it hard to put a smile on my face for my family when I, all I want to do is cry. I have ended my school day in tears way too many times this year, it's exhausting, it's traumatizing, it's not fair to me or my family. I deserve better than being assaulted five times this year. My students deserve better than watching their teacher be treated that, like that, and I should not have to fear coming to work daily, and I should not have to have a bodyguard to do my job.
Thank you. Jamie Rollins.
Do you know what I love about teachers? Is they are passionate, they fight for what's right, and all of us went into this job knowing we could make a change. None of us went into it with that in question. We believed in ourselves, we believed in our skill, and we believe that kids are capable. I have spent months now coming here with the hopes that maybe from the top down we can fix something. I have had an epiphany. It is the teachers that need to take on and educate everybody. Teachers, with the work they do with students, is the heart and soul of any school district. What we create, what we can find, the diamonds in the rough, the kids that might come from these situations, that we can work with them, change them, and change their lives. On last board meeting, I sat here as, there was a question of whether you were actually following board policy. I want you to know, as OMEA president, that makes me sick, because I sit with the teachers when they have a human mistake, and we are penalized, disciplined, and held to a high standard on that board policy. It disturbed me beyond what I could even compare. I expect the elected officials to maintain board policy at all times, because we are expected to. I, I wanted to make sure I made that statement, but there's a lot more, because the people that are here and the people that aren't here are passionate and loving. We love the kids in this community. We love what we can do for this community. So I wrote down a few things that we believe in, things that we know, as a teaching staff, and I will include classified staff, anybody in the buildings is working on a day-to-day basis with these kids. We believe and know kids will meet high expectations. We believe and know that kids will respond to structure and the expectation for them to follow it. Kathy Walzac spoke about my kids, and it's because they know what I expect. They know they are capable of achieving great things, because I tell them, because they are. We believe and know that our kids are talented and that they want to learn regardless of barriers. It doesn't matter where they come from, challenges in educating, they want to be successful and talented. And we know and have seen that Marion City Schools has the power to change lives, not just a day in a kid's life, lives. And I hope you listen today, when you hear the reality of what these teachers are living through, and when you pretend it's not really existing. I question whether you believe and whether you know these things about kids, because your teaching staff does. We do know the power of children and their capabilities, and I challenge all of you, admin board, help us, your staff wants to work for you, for the community, and for our children. board, help us, your staff wants to work for you, for the community, and for our children. Thank you.
Jonda Axholm.
As I said earlier, I teach third grade at Taft, and this is my eighth year at Taft in the third grade. This year's been the most difficult and challenging year in my educational career. Within my classroom, I have several Tier Three behavior students. These students at times have hit myself, other staff members, as well as other students within the classroom. Along with physical contact, they throw items across the room regularly, tell me and the other students in the room to shut up, and question and talk back to every instruction given. I'm not up here speaking because I want you to feel sorry for me. I'm up here tonight because I'm a strong enough teacher to know when I need help and we need help. I've had to evacuate my room on three occasions because it was unsafe for the students to be in there while a student was having a breakdown. The students no longer feel safe and therefore learning cannot take place. Isn't school supposed to be the safest place a child is? I'm a strong proponent of building relationships with my students, but my personal relationships can only go so far. These students who I love with my whole heart, even when a chair is flying through the air, need more help than I'm able to or trained to give. Our ESP does what she can, but in many situations, she is also not trained to deal with the emotional, mental health issues that these kids face every day. People have asked, often asked me, "Why do you stay there?" And my answer has always been and will always be, leaving is not an option for me. These kids need me and I still believe that. My heart belongs at Taft Elementary. These kids have very little consistency at home, as well as in our building with staff turnaround. If I can be the one person who loves them and sees them year after year, then I want to be that person. I'm speaking on behalf of my colleagues and more importantly, my students. They should feel safe, loved, and protected in school, and I'm not sure that's the current situation within some of Taft Elementary's classrooms. We need behavior support, consequences for these behaviors, and support for each other. We're trying to make a difference in all kids' lives, but it takes a village and we need more members that are trained to help our kiddos.
Thank you, Jonda. Betsy Ratliff.
As you know, I'm Betsy Ratliff and I'm here as the MEA Vice President. I had five pages written out exactly what I wanted to say, and I decided, you know what? It doesn't matter anymore because I have been saying it for years. For years, I've been coming to your board meetings and I've been saying, "We can do better. We can do business as usual and still have all of our teachers hurt, or we can do something different and we can be better." And yet, I'm still here saying the same thing, even when I've been encouraged to give up the union because it might interfere with my job, which is no, because my job, whether it's supporting teachers because the kids are gifted or whether it's supporting the teachers because they're in the union, it doesn't matter, because this is Betsy Ratliff, whether I'm MEA Vice President or just an MEA member. But I'm tired of saying the same thing because no one cares, except them. They care. Our kids care. When our kids come home because, "Oh my gosh, I can't believe the way someone treated my teacher today," that's a problem. But guess what? When it's my kids saying it, I can talk to them about it. But guess what? We have a lot of kids going home who don't have parents that can work through that with them. And so I am begging you, yes, according to today, Mr. Dr. Irucci said, "Our buildings have the autonomy to solve problems." They don't. And you know why I know this? Because I have a great relationship with our admin at those buildings. My union job did not interfere with my relationship with principals. They still talk to me. They still talk to me. They don't see me as an adversary, unlike our admin sees me as an adversary. I am here for kids, I'm here for teachers, I'm here for the community because we made a choice. John and I aren't from Marion. We chose to buy a house here, work in this district, and impact the lives of children. But we're tired. I'm tired of saying the same thing over and over again with no one caring, except for all the teachers and all the staff who are working with our kids every day. And if you're not one of them, you need to get in and see them, because these people are amazing. And this is why I won't give up being the union Vice President, because of them, because they need a voice. And I'm so thankful to those of you who are speaking up today. Thank you, because there are so many of you who are experiencing that. Thank you.
Allison Schumacher.
I'm Allison Schumacher and I'm a first-grade teacher at Taft. I've been at Taft for five years now, and the behaviors we are seeing are becoming increasingly worse, especially this year. I consider myself a strong person, a strong teacher, and I've developed a strong classroom management system. I've always had good relationships with my students and I know them on an individual level. Despite having a strong classroom management system and developing good relationships with my students, I've still been kicked, pushed, threatened for rocks to be thrown at my head, hit, and a door slammed on me to the point of bruising, all this year. I'm at a breaking point. I love my job, I love my students, but something needs to be done. Yes, a lot of our students have trauma. Most of them handle them and put, handle it in a nonviolent and non-threatening way. But some of our students are handling their trauma in a threatening or violent way. This now brings trauma to our other students and our teachers. We're not able to teach because we're dealing with managing these disruptive behaviors. Students that are at school to learn cannot learn because of the distractions, and now they also have trauma, such as watching another student hit or kick their teacher or verbally abuse them daily. Teachers are not superheroes, we're not hu, we are humans, we can hurt and we can break. We too can have trauma, and easily so when we are abused daily in our jobs. We need to put teachers' needs on our priority list. And at what point are we going to put the needs of the majority of our students on the top of our priority list? Without teachers, no learning can occur. It's time to put our teachers' safety and needs at the top of our priority list, and it's time to put the majority of our students that come to learn at the top of our priority list. We need to hold the few amount of students that are showing threatening and violent behaviors accountable for their actions, regardless of their age. Kindergartners are able to know it's not okay to hit a teacher or another student. We also need to hold them accountable for their actions regardless of the traumas they face. We can teach them ways to manage their feelings in a non-threatening and nonviolent manner. Students need discipline, structure, and accountability. It is our job to instill in all students how to be respectful citizens that deal with their trauma in a positive manner. We, Marion City Schools, truly do these kids a disservice if we send them out into the real world without learning how to be good people. Thank you.
Shanda Hecker.
I'm Shanda Hecker and I've been a teacher for Marion City for twenty-three years. And I've been thinking about the sixty-two percent vote for CKLA and wondering a few things. One, how many people voted? A small portion of people are making a huge decision for all of us. Shouldn't all of the teachers who are teaching language arts have a vote? Have a voice? We've all got to see both curriculums and fill out a survey, but we all didn't get to vote. I for one, I was one of the people that got to pilot Wonders. One of the reasons CKLA was chosen was, this was a quote from Dr. Irucci on Thursday, or Friday, "is the easiest to implement from the teacher's perspective." That's what was, not your quote, but someone's quote from the survey. "We are all professionals and should be able to implement anything to our classroom. Shouldn't we be picking what is best for kids, not what is the easiest? The way our district chose to pilot these two curriculums didn't create an ideal situation. I know that Wonders and CKLA teams poured their hearts and souls into full implementation of these curriculums. Then the pilot teams basically had to sell their curriculum to the literacy committee. Of course, each pilot team was going to make their curriculum look the best. This in turn turned into a competition atmosphere and caused tension. This isn't a good way to pilot something." We've all gone, we've gone so many years without a curriculum, so of course, when we were offered these curriculums, it was great because something is better than having nothing. However, do we really want to sign a five-year contract with a curriculum that hasn't been updated since 2017? A curriculum with stories written by hired authors for CKLA? Some of these are not acclaimed authors that students can become interested in and go to the Marion Public Library to find more of their books. We are depriving our students of very, so many other resources. In the district like Marion City, don't we want to expose our students to good, rich literature and topics they can relate to? Don't we want to do what's best for kids? As educators, we all know students love to read about things they understand and can make connections to. How is a first grader going to relate to the Civil War? Or a second grader have schema about the War of 1812 or Greek and God, Greek gods and goddesses? These are not social studies standards for first or second grade. As primary teachers, it is our job to teach students to read. Intermediate teachers, read to learn. CKLA doesn't have the resources for small group reading that we need. I am concerned that by going into a five-year contract with CKLA, we will be doing a huge disservice to the children and families of Marion City Schools. On the purchase order on the board agenda, agenda tonight, the writing studio is not being purchased. This is CKLA's writing curriculum for narrative, opinion, and informational writing. Reading and writing go together hand in hand. We need a writing curriculum also, or we're going to be in the same place and six schools are going to be teaching six different things. The middle school is already using a curriculum from McGraw-Hill. Wouldn't it make sense for us to send students to Grant that have a similar program? Why wouldn't we give everyone the opportunity to vote? Every single teacher in every elementary should have had the opportunity to vote for this curriculum. We need to do what's best for kids. We need to consider tabling the curriculum vote, and I know that's going to be tricky because I am one that also said that we need to choose something to have this.
Shanda.
But.
I hate to interrupt you, but you're over your time.
Okay.
I'm sorry.
Okay. But let's do what's best for kids.
Thank you. Melissa Bond.
Good evening. My name is Melissa Bond and I'm a fifth-grade teacher at Taft Elementary in my sixteenth year of teaching. My fellow teachers and I have never endured any of the situations that we are seeing in MCS on a daily basis. We as teachers have never had to look over our shoulders to make sure that we are safe at work. This is a very unsettling feeling as a teacher, and many of my colleagues are feeling the same way. According to the ORC 2901.01a3, the definition of physical harm to a person states, "Any injury, illness, or other physiological impairment regardless of its gravity or duration." This has been documented twelve times in our school at Taft, with the potential of more incidents that were not reported. The definition of assault 2903.13a states, "No person shall knowingly cause or attempt to cause physical harm to another or to another's unborn." This definition also covers recklessly causing harm to another person. In normal situations, this act would be considered a misdemeanor of the first degree. However, Section 2903.13c4d states, "If the offense is committed in any of the following circumstances, assault is a felony in the fifth degree." This code further then states, "If the victim of the offense is a schoolteacher or administrator or a school bus operator, and the offense occurs in a school, on the school premises, in a school building, on a school bus." Once again, this has been documented twelve times at Taft Elementary with the potential of more incidents that may not have been reported. As you can see, I'm in a situation where I need to be extra protective of my physical safety. Being on crutches adds an extra degree of stress to an already trying workplace environment. Unfortunately, I am one of those teachers that have been assaulted this year under the definitions that I have just explained. In my situation, which occurred in the lunchroom in the front of the entire fourth and fifth grade student body, I attempted to remind a student of our PBIS expectations and utilize PACS techniques in order to de-escalate the situation. However, the student then proceeded to shove me with his forearm while screaming "No F you" seven to eight different times. He continued to show signs of aggression by taking steps in my direction while holding his middle finger in the air while continuing to, continuing to scream "F you." Another teacher escorted the student immediately to the office. Since this situation, I can't help but feel like I am walking on eggshells around this student and many other students. I constantly have to think about what behaviors I address and what behaviors are not worth my safety. As staff, we feel that we cannot address certain behaviors due to fear of escalating a child. This is not okay. This is an educational facility. We are supposed to be providing these students with a solid education, but behavior is taking away our ability to do this effectively. We come to you asking for change. At this time, I would like to request permission to read a statement from a teacher who could not be here tonight due to a medical family concern. Would the board grant me extra time to read her statement?
Could you give us the letter and we'll put it into the record?
Yes.
I think.
Can we do that at the end?
I would, I would appreciate that.
Can someone else read it?
Yeah.
I'm sorry. No, it's the, I'm sorry. It is the policy that if you, please, please, order. It is the policy that the person who wants to read something to us has to be here present. I'm sorry.
All right.
I'm sorry, but thank you. Brittany. Brittany and I, I'm sorry, I, can you pronounce your last name? I'm so sorry.
Bahady.
Bahady. Thank you.
My name is Brittany Bahady and I have been the music teacher at Taft for three years. I'm concerned about the student behavior at Taft. It makes me feel like I can no longer teach and be safe at school. On Wednesday, February 23rd, I was assaulted by a student while trying to help him clean up for lunch. I will never be able to forget this day that I was assaulted by a student that I love and care about. He did not want to throw away his trash. I'm so sorry. And when I tried to help him, he backhanded me to the face. I had to see a doctor the next day for a swollen eye and painful, it was painful when I blinked, and I had to get my glasses adjusted because of how hard he hit me. And since then, I have been very afraid to be back at Taft, and I just want to feel safe at school again. Thank you.
Thank you. Allison Ellis. Allison.
So I am the, I am MEA rep at Hayes Elementary. We have had numerous occasions with one of our SLCs that Student Services is aware of that a student has numerous times urinated on staff members as well as our principal. The child has destroyed the classroom numerous times to the point where his parents have been called over to help him clean it up. The teacher's aide has taken a position in another classroom because they could not tolerate it any longer, so now there is a new aide in the classroom that is having health issues. So this teacher has been without anyone in the classroom besides herself for twenty-seven days in February and March. That means that she no longer gets planning time. She normally has to eat her lunch in the classroom if she gets lunch at all, because there is no one in there to cover the room. The teacher has submitted her time sheets to the treasury and our principal signed off on them and got, I was notified today that those have been declined, for her to get paid when she's not getting her sub, her specials times or her lunch. These are severe issues where teachers, she is now having to be medicated, she is scared to come to work, and her own personal children. She is scared to come to work and her own personal children are in the building. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for your comments and I know it doesn't feel like it, but we do listen and we are adjusting and trying to make a difference for everyone. And like I said, I know it's probably not exactly what everyone wants to hear. But please know that I think I speak for all of our board members and administrative teams that we do care. We do care and we care for our kids or we wouldn't be here.
Do something.
So.
Yeah.
Okay, order please. I know we've been sitting here for almost two hours. We have a lot of agenda items to cover. Could I get a, like a one-minute, two-minute recess just so we could stand up? I would like to do that because I know myself, I'm kinda like, would like to stand up and just, for just a second, so just a two-minute thing. So we'll reconvene at eight? We'll convene at eight, 7:55. We need to make a motion for the approval of the agenda. Order. I'm sorry, are there any additions or deletions to the agenda?
Yeah, I would like.
Hold on.
I would make a motion to add to the agenda some discussion time about what we just heard about the staff assaults.
I'll second that.
We can have that at the end of the meeting. I'm sorry. There's a place for discussion at the end of the meeting, I believe.
That, that, that's fine. I think we need to address at some point in this meeting what we're hearing, whether it is, you know, discussions about future meetings or special meetings or something. But we got to obviously as a board, address the concerns that are very troubling.
It's item 13.
Yeah, thank you.
All right. Thank you. All right. Approval of the agenda, I need a motion to approve as presented.
And I would also make a motion to delete from the agenda the vote regarding the curriculum. For me, honestly, I think this is a big, big decision. We obviously have a recommendation from the literacy committee brought to us by the superintendent. And I'm not saying that I'm totally against that recommendation. What I want, quite honestly, I think it, the cost and the years involved needs more discussions like we had tonight. And honestly, a fifth board member, if truth be told, because that's just what I believe. I think the decision is too big. I think it needs a full board vote. We're obviously going to have a board member. I understand that these teachers, whatever curriculum they, the board ultimately decides once the materials. But I believe in both curriculums, the teachers will have online access. It should be immediately. As soon as we cut the check, we should be getting online access so they can start reviewing that. But again, this decision, and I heard from Ms. Hector, I don't necessarily, I understand her concerns about the process and so forth, but the process was what the process was. So I don't want to rehash a process argument. I want, I want to basically take the time, we were given this, it's almost like a media dump where you have a bad media story, so you hit somebody the weekend before people take a long break. This was given to us the Friday before everybody went on spring break. I've been scrambling around to try to figure things out because quite honestly, I was headed down a different path than what the literacy committee was headed down. So I, you know, I want to give them, instead of just, you know, turning them down, give them their just due on researching more of the CKLA. So I'm asking to table that until the next meeting to vote.
And going along with that, and this was something I made known this week, I think I'm better off because my mind is elsewhere in terms of what was just shared with us. I wrote earlier this week, second, due to the following factors. Number one, this decision, speaking of the curriculum decision, this decision will impact an entire generation of Marion City School students. This decision requires a spending commitment of half a million dollars. This decision is expected to be made without the input of a newly selected board member, as Mr. Ratliff just said, due to the unexpected resignation of our former board president. I believe it would be wise to briefly delay an official board vote on the approval of the proposed literacy curriculum in order to allow the entire board during a special board meeting to personally hear from the literacy committee, the teachers who piloted the program, as well as the committee of parents that was created to evaluate and share their input. Due to my job and family commitments, I'm not able to attend nearly as many, excuse me, meetings as I would like to. As I mentioned, I met and went over the data with Greg Menzies for an hour. I hope you can see that I've pored over the opinions of those who piloted and then some of those who didn't. I've had numerous discussions concerning both, spent 45 minutes watching Wonders Be Teach and Implement. I see the value in both programs. I think I've pretty much stated some of my reservations about one. Continuing here, knowing full well, and please believe me when I say this, knowing full well that a time constraint does indeed exist. I feel that in order to honor the time that was already devoted to the piloting of these two programs, we as a board, in order to make a well-informed decision, owe it to our students, parents, and staff to consider the arguments made by all involved parties. And I appreciate the opportunity we've been given to hear some of that tonight too. But again, due to the gravity of this decision, I would second Mr. Ratliff's motion.
And I would say that, you know, I know myself, I've done the homework, a lot of homework. I've talked to and observed CKLA lessons as well as Wonders. And I appreciate all the time our teachers have put into this to come to a recommendation like they did. My questions have been answered by Dr. Iarussi, by Ben, by Lisa, by Krista, the presentation tonight. You know, it is a big decision and I get that. Our next regularly scheduled board meeting is April 19th. The plan is to have a new board member ready to go by the 14th. And so that gives them five days. You guys have had three months.
With all due respect, we haven't had, we haven't had three months. We had from when they released the vote.
So I'm just saying, we've had this time and you've had weeks.
Well, I mean, if you want to vote on it, we'll vote on it. It's going to be enough for me, I can tell you that. So if you don't want to table it, let's vote on it.
Ted, what's your question?
Well, my comments on that motion are simply that a lot of work has gone into it and we ought to honor the process when we say to, and you've said it yourself, honor teachers and their input. And teachers have had their input from many, many directions on this. And if we don't honor the process, it's like saying to them, we were only kidding. But it's not, we don't honor the process. And so I think we ought to honor that process. We, as Mrs. McKea has said, we've had not just five days, we've had plenty of time to study this and knew what was coming. We knew it was going to be a lot of money. Do we give a new board member the three, same three months you folks had?
You guys keep saying three months. I don't know what you're talking about. These people didn't give it the recommendation as far as I know.
We were all invited. We were all invited.
Ted, I went and saw the stuff, man. I was at an open house. I mean, you guys keep saying that and acting like you didn't do it.
But I'm just saying, we also had the chance to hear the literacy committee report.
What did you hear from parents? Did you hear from them?
I have not.
Okay.
But I read, I read the report.
But parents were part of this.
Well, they got no vote. They got no say. We didn't have a special meeting to allow them to address this about it. And quite frankly, I'm a parent of a CKLA student, fourth grade, and I think the program's not very good. That's just my personal opinion. I've seen it as a parent.
But it's, but the folks have spoken and they took a vote.
But they give an input, Ted, an input. They give a recommendation. It's this board's power to do it yes or no. We have a very clear distinction. You think if a teacher's organization gives us a recommendation, boom, it's golden. If Mr. Iarussi gives us the recommendation, boom, rubber stamp, golden. That's not the way I feel.
No matter which one, they want to have it before school's out. And if we delay this even one week, we're not going to have it before school's out.
You will have an online version instantaneously.
The next board meeting. And I want to go on record in honor of those teachers who did all of this to say, I want to sleep at night to know that I voted and gave them every chance to have those materials in their hands before school's out this year. So that's, that's, that's where I'm at, is honoring the process that we went through. And it was very thorough, comprehensive. It may not have been the vote you liked, but it was the vote.
I'm not saying that I'm voting down CK, I will tonight if you don't move it. I'm asking for more time. I think the community needs to be heard. I think a fifth board member needs to be heard. You're talking, as Mr. Weibling has pointed out, a whole generation of students. And it breaks my heart when I talk to CKLA kindergarten teachers that talk about, we're two months, we're three months ahead of schedule where we would have been. So for basically a decade, we haven't given our students basically the tools that they should have had. We've missed out a decade of a literacy program, so we got to implement something. There's no doubt about that. My question, I'm asking to table it for more time. You can't expect somebody to come in and they get the materials in September and then they give us 10 days from their recommendation to the time we're supposed to approve it. And we're just supposed to say yay. I mean, that's what you guys want us to do, but you know, we can do the vote. I know which way I'm going to do. But you know, you guys have the vote.
Well, that's fine. If we have another two-to-two vote, that's sending a message to those who worked very hard for this night. We knew this, we knew this was the night for months that we were going to vote on it.
This is why I asked the question, had it been considered that in order to maximize the strength and minimize the weaknesses of both programs, since we have Hegarty, okay, that would supplement the supposed or it seems to be the well-acknowledged weakness of the Wonders program in terms of the phonetic awareness and phonics in the beginning. We already, that's a program we already pay for, so it's kind of built in. And then CKLA seems to, again, based on what I've read, seems to be supported by K through two. And that's where, that's why I asked specifically, had this really been considered by the literacy committee? Because I doubt we would be the only school district in Ohio that would have a branch, if you will. And I understand Krista's comments and that is a concern. But then the same concern would exist if we go CKLA K through five, well, then we got the grant transition too. But if we could get the, I, no plan is perfect, but can we tailor it to Marion City School kids to get the best of both worlds?
Scott, I don't mean any disrespect. But you were invited to that meeting, that you could have asked that question when the presentation was made to the literacy committee.
Why can't they answer it now?
We're here at a time when we had a whole conversation.
It must have been, I'm not joking, but was it within the last 36 to 48 hours where that question came to mind? And yeah, and that's, so, believe it or not, and that's just, again, poring through all this stuff, you start to wonder. You start to talk to people. And that's when reading, now I got stuff everywhere. In terms of the teachers' comments, I started to notice, hey, it's the primary teachers. They love it. They love CKLA. And the others love Wonders. And that's just, can we tailor it to best meet the needs of our district? I just would like that to be considered. That's why I'm asking to table it temporarily because I know there is a time crunch. I won't deny that.
What are we going to learn between now and April 18th? Is that your projected date you would like to vote on it on April 18th?
You should probably learn that Salina Schools had this implemented for less than a year and they're trying to withdraw CKLA. You should probably learn Mr. Weibling's ideas adopted by the Lima Schools. I mean, you should probably learn those things. But I guess if we don't ask questions, if we just rush into stuff, you know, with blindfolds, this is the kind of stuff we get.
Administration has talked to many other districts that have had great success with it.
Fair enough.
And both of our programs, both pilots were, saw a 10% increase in student performance on the pointer test.
Yeah, I went and saw it. I met with Greg.
And that was outstanding. That's an outstanding result compared to students who did not have the pilots. So.
Don't refute that at all.
I, I, we have had our own, we've had our own test with Rocky internally. I don't have to worry about what happened in Salina or any other district. It's what happened here.
Yeah, no, I get it. I think all the material I've been provided, the test scores and the percentages are about the same. The comments are plus and the comments are minus on both programs. But I do know that when I look at the Wonders program, it's engaging material. It's colorful. It's diverse, meaning I can see different students in there. The CKL, CKLA material was black and white. The Wonders had more programs than CKLA. The Wonders programs connects with the grant material. The CKLA was over our kids' head. I've seen it because I'm a parent and I'm talking about medieval times and the next lesson, my daughter's talking about poetry. It doesn't even flow like a normal education would. The CKLA lacks writing. The CKLA gives us a $1.1 million cost and then goes down to $5.93. We're cutting things from it. The staffing from CKLA versus the rep at Wonders was night and day. The Wonders rep was here, CKLA was absent. The parents group chose Wonders. When I was talking to the former president of this board, she was interested more in Wonders. When I talked to Kelly, she was interested more in Wonders. When I talked to Scott, he's more interested in Wonders. When I, myself, I'm more interested in Wonders. Then we're going to turn this and flip it on its head? And say now CKLA just because we had a recommendation without doing due diligence? That's not how I want to operate with about $600,000. But if you want to, go ahead, let's have the vote. I'm saying we should table it. That's my motion. He second it. We can have a roll call.
All right.
The motion is to amend.
Amend.
The, no, the motion is to table.
Item 9F. We've had discussions, so Veronica, call the rules.
So the motion is to.
Is to table the literacy curriculum in 9F under new business.
And that motion was shaped by Mr. Ratliff.
Seconded by Scott. Okay. Can you call the roll?
Mr. Ratliff?
Yes, I would like to table it.
Mr. Weibling?
Yes.
Mr. McKenna?
No.
Mrs. McKay?
No.
Okay, so the motion failed.
Motion failed, so we'll keep it on.
I would move to approve the agenda as presented.
I'll second. Discussion, call the roll, please.
Mr. McKenna?
Yes.
Mr. Ratliff?
Yes.
Mr. Weibling?
Yes.
Mrs. McKay?
Yes. All right, motion carried. See, I remembered. I don't believe there's any old business under item seven, so we'll go to news business. All right. All righty. Dr. Iarussi recommends the approval of the following students for early graduation, please order. Participating in graduation activities with the class of 2022 pending completion of coursework and meeting all other necessary requirements. Miranda Simons, Jordan Millizer, Jillian Shelton, and Cheyenne Little. Do I have a motion, please?
So move.
Second.
Discussion?
Dr. Iarussi, I just got a question because it shows up on a regular basis, it appears. And again, but not for a minute. What, if we could generalize, what type of kids at Harvard, I know, who tends to apply for this? Are there certain reasons? It's just, can you give us a little bit of background for early graduates?
It's varying. Probably Jen Musbaugh would have a better, you know, take on that. But from what I gather from her, some students have jobs, you know, they, I think workforce has a lot to do with these situations.
Extenuating circumstances.
Always extenuating.
Is this an issue of credit recovery then, or is this an accelerated track to do things faster?
No, it could be. Well, our Excel program allows for some. No, it could be. Well, our Excel program allows for some students to, to do credit recovery and get ahead actually as well. So like an early graduate. That's at a high school. That's, um, what's, it's an acronym.
It's our 21st century. And now it's the end of the day for Excel.
But it's Excel?
Yeah, it's a different.
And it's literally X.
X.
L.
Okay, oh, gotcha.
So it is credit recovery.
Gotcha. Okay, but it is credit recovery. That, that.
That's the program. I'm not suggesting that's what the students did to graduate early. Don't want to speak to that.
No problem. That's fine. Okay, I was just, because it shows up on numerous agendas. So, okay, that was it.
All right. Any other discussion? Please call the roll.
Mr. McKenna?
Yes.
Mr. Wibling?
Yes.
Mr. Ratliff?
Yes.
Mrs. McKay?
Yes. Motion carried. Graduating class of 2022. Superintendent recommends approval of the graduating class of 2022 Harding High School for commencement on May 22nd, 2022, pending completion of all state and board approved graduation requirements. And we had a list that was attached. It looked like there was over 235 students. So yay. All right. Do I have a motion, please?
So move.
Second. Discussion?
I just want to throw in there too, this, this class, this graduating class of 2022 has had a different high school experience than, than most of us in this room or anybody else's experience. And so I got a chance to hear some of their leadership talk at Kiwanis a few weeks ago. And couldn't have been more prouder of them and many comments about how resilient those kids are. So stay ahead of that.
Call the roll, please.
Mr. Wibling?
Yes.
Mr. McKenna?
Yes.
Mr. Ratliff?
Yes.
Mrs. McKay?
Yes. Motion carried. I need to write a note to myself. All right. Sorry, I just need to make a note so I don't forget something at the end. All right. Um, item C, Marion Tech Board reapport, appointment. Superintendent recommends approval of the appointment of Tim Anderson to the Marion Technical Board of Trustees. The term of office for Mr. Anderson will be May 1st, 2022 to April 30th, 2025. Do I have a motion?
So move. Second.
Discussion. Call the roll, please.
Mr. McKenna?
Yes.
Mr. Wibling?
Yes.
Mr. Ratliff?
Yes.
Mrs. McKay?
Yes. Item D, MOU between OPEC and Marion City Schools. Superintendent recommends approval of the MOU with OPEC Local 154 and the Marion City Schools as attached in reference to additional duties beyond the scope of their current position. Do I have a motion, please?
So move.
Second.
Discussion?
Did we get the language taken care of with that?
Yeah, I, I had a question on some language and I think, um, Mr. Reinhardt and the union faithful has cleared my suspicions up and it's time and a half and all that. It's a separate overtime section. So I think the language is correct. As long as everybody understands what that language is, then I think we're good.
Great. All right. Call the roll.
Mr. McKenna?
Yes.
Mr. Wibling?
Yes.
Mr. Ratliff?
Yes.
Mrs. McKay?
Yes. Overnight robotics VEX IQ world competition trip. Superintendent recommends approval for, of an oversight, overnight robotics VEX IQ world competition trip. Departure date 5/7/22, return date 5/11/22. It will be funded through school funding plus robotics revenue for donations will also fundraise as necessary. Do I have a motion, please?
So move.
I'll second. Discussion?
Yeah, I, I'd just like to congratulate the kids. I think this is an awesome opportunity that they've actually earned. Great representation by, and teaching by our staff. I would ask the board to consider, I don't know how to do this, but consider, um, or Dr. Irucci really to consider about maybe possibly making a pathway using this program. And what I'm talking about is, I remember at the state of the schools, the gentleman talking about, I think he was from Can Do, talking about Intel coming in here. Uh, I would like to see if we could make a pathway from the robotics. Teachers had basically said, we started coding in the fourth or fifth grade, I think fifth. And, and if we can move that pathway all the way through, we might have kids ready to take entry level positions at Intel, which even President Biden had addressed, that's going to be the next Silicon Valley. So I think we can, and obviously that being about an hour and 15 minutes, we could take advantage of that. Because the time that that building is being, I guess, finalized and jobs created, I think our kids would be filtering through, especially these kids during this program. So I, I think what I'm asking is to consider sending in addition to those two teachers, possibly a building administrator, because it's my understanding that Mr. Sabian is very instrumental in their success. Um, and possibly somebody from administration to go with them to learn about how other programs are operating to see if we can make this pathway happen for a small investment. I think this would be a lot to maybe, uh, so for those administrator and the, the two administrators to go to kind of talk and learn about the robotics competition there in Dallas and possibly having ideas that they could report back to possibly do a, a pathway. I'd also ask the board to consider possibly having, giving Dr. Irucci some sort of, for lack of a better word, I know the treasure's here, she probably, it's not going to like it, but slush fund in case the money is needed extra for these kids, whether it be, I don't know the amount, but I mean, uh, an amount that, uh, Dr. Irucci could approve that he would not have to come back to us to ask for it, uh, because this is such a big opportunity. And I know travel costs and things can, and sometimes fundraising falls short. So, uh, just asking that he have the power to be able to have some money to give to these kids and the teaching staff to be able to go and possibly consider sending some administrators. Uh, I think it'd be very important to send administrators that had an opportunity to work with the program, success with the program. I thi, I think that would be great for not only the kids, just everybody involved.
I think that's an excellent idea. And I, I've been on some of the conference or the teams meetings through Columbus State. And, uh, it sounds to me like the majority of the money for training is going to go into community colleges and technical schools. So if we can have those partnerships with Marion Tech, um, that will be like a feeder for our kids to go right in there. There's some other things that I've been thinking about too, but that's for another day. But, um, I think we could get that extra stuff with the administrators at the next April meeting and still be, you know, we have the time to, you know, talk to Mr. Saban and.
We budgeted already for them. I think we took care of their accommodations and they're working on, because every year it's in a different location. Um, we're slowly becoming the Alabama of VEX Robotics, if you will, as far as their reputation's concerned. And, and so, um, you know, this is not the first time that they've done this. So we've, we've tried to accommodate them as much as possible. This is a little different situation because if, I think last time they were in Louisville? And they were able to drive, yeah.
My son was a part of that.
And Mrs. Lawson's been working with the middle school in terms of their needs and where that's going to lead.
Yeah, I mean, I don't, I know I talked to.
They won't be hanging.
Yeah, I, I know I talked to Ms. Pitts about a possible pathway after the state of the schools. And she thought it was great, show me the computer lab over here. And if we could keep that kind of going. I do know, uh, she, I think her daughter graduates from college, so she's not able to go during this time. So we would have to be other people, uh, if we're sending representatives. I just think it would be good to do. This is a very big thing. Yep.
And also, if you guys haven't been to the robotics classroom over at Grant, um, I believe it's like eight o'clock on Fridays. Uh, and it may be every eight o'clock day, but the one I could go to was a Friday. And, um, they have everything ready to go and the kids are practicing. It's a very cool, cool thing to, to watch. And I remember, who did I talk to? Kristen Taupe, I think is who organized it for me to come over and, and watch that. So it was very, very, very cool. And I can't say this enough, it's two women running this program. And it's also diverse in so many ways. And, you know, uh, there's almost as many girls as there are guys. So, you know, it's all the good things that I enjoy seeing anyway. All right, we have a motion and a second. We've had our discussion. Veronica.
Mr. Wibling?
Yes.
Mr. Ratliff?
Yes.
Uh, Mr. McKenna?
Yes.
Mr., Mrs. McKay?
Yes. Motion carried.
Veronica, can I clarify? I had Scott and Kelly as first and second.
I had Scott as first, Kelly as second.
Okay, I think, sorry, I thought you had.
And I hit Kelly last and she was the president.
Okay, sorry. I thought you had. Thank you.
Throw it around there all the time.
I just wanted to make sure it was, I had it.
I'll make sure that gets on the next, I'm sure Ron will get it on the next agenda, but I'll, I wrote it down for the other travel, admin travel. So item F. Overnight International Youth Silent Film Festival Awards Show Trip. Superintendent recommends approval of an overnight international youth silent film festival awards show trip in Detroit, Michigan. Departure date 4/2/22, return date 4/3/22. Transportation will be MCS school bus. Funding will be through donations from family, friends, community, and school. Teachers are reaching out to companies as well. So do I have a motion, please? I've got pickles.
So move.
Okay. Just.
Okay, okay, gotcha.
All right, discussion? All right, call the roll, please.
Mr. McKenna?
Yes.
Mr. Ratliff?
Yes.
Mr. Wibling?
Yes.
Mrs. McKay?
Yes. Under new business A, Goodwill. Uh, this is for $4,000, ARA IDEA Budget Source. Superintendent recommends the approval of an amended agreement between Marion City Schools and Goodwill to provide job coaching services for the remainder of the 2021-22 school year. Do I have a motion? I'll make the motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Discussion? Roll call, please.
Mrs. McKay?
Yes.
Mr. Wibling?
Yes.
Mr. Ratliff?
Yes.
Mr. McKenna?
Yes.
Motion carried. B, Envision Ed Plus for the amount of $12,650, General Fund. Superintendent recommends approval of an agreement between Marion City Schools and Ed Vision, Envision Ed Plus for the coordination, writing, and submission of three Ohio Department of Education after-school summer school grant applications. Do I have a motion, please?
So move. Second.
Discussion?
I guess my general question is, um, I, I know we have talented, obviously, grant writers within the district. Is there something that makes this a special situation that we need to contract it out?
Yeah, we've been working with these folks for quite some time. I mean, they, they, we just hit the $10 million mark since we brought them on board here. They just have a great success rate. The only, the only grant we did not get, and we just missed, and we still may get because they're kind of going down the list, was the Gear Up Renewal Grant. And so this was a, um, we were notified of some of these agreements. We, we, the, the summer grants, you know, were kind of on a tight timeframe. And so that's why I gave that the go-ahead and asking for approval today for that. I think we got a really good shot of getting those, those grants.
And from what you're telling us, I'm taking it there's special service in this area.
That's what they do.
That's what they do. Yep.
All right. Any more discussion? Call the roll, please.
Mr. McKenna?
Yes.
Mr. Wibling?
Yes.
Mr. Ratliff?
Yes.
And Mrs. McKay?
Yes. Motion carried. Envision Ed Plus, item C, $4,250. Superintendent recommends approval of an agreement between Marion City Schools and Ed, and Envision Ed Plus for the coordination, writing, and submission of a capital and equity grant work. Do I have a motion, please?
So move.
I'll second.
Did you second?
I second. Discussion?
Dr. Irucci, this is same grant company, two different.
Yep.
Things they're doing, right?
Right. The one, actually, they were two separate contracts for that. The one was specifically for those two grants. We already got the equity grant too. So hopefully, fingers crossed on, it looks pretty good for the capital budget.
Okay.
All right, call the roll, please.
Um, Mr. Wibling?
Yes.
Mrs. McKay?
Yes.
Mr. Ratliff?
Yes.
Mr. McKenna?
Yes.
Motion carried. Item D, Meta Solutions, General Fund. Superintendent recommends approval of an agreement between Marion City Schools and Meta Solutions for the 20 fiscal year 23 services as presented, and there are three attachments. Do I have a motion, please?
So move.
I'll second. Sorry, do you have it? Scott, that's fine. Discussion? Call the roll, please.
Mr. McKenna?
Yes.
Mr. Wibling?
Yes.
Mr. Ratliff?
Yes.
Mrs. McKay?
Yes. Motion carried. Bus purchases using Meta Solutions. This is coming from state bus funds. Superintendent recommends approval of participating in Meta Bus Bids to add two buses for a total of four purchases using state bus purchasing funds in fiscal '22 as follows. Meta Solutions Cooperative Advertising and Receiving Bids for School Bus Chasses and Bodies, whereas the Marion City Schools Board of Education wishes to advertise and receive bids for the purchase of one 66 conventional passenger with one wheelchair passenger conventional school bus and three 77 to 78 passenger conventional school buses. Therefore, be it resolved, Marion City Schools Board of Education wishes to participate and authorize Meta Solutions to advertise and receive bids on said board's behalf as per the specifications submitted for the cooperative purchase of one 66 plus one wheelchair passenger conventional school bus and three 77 to 78 passenger conventional school buses. Do I have a?
So move.
Thank you.
Second.
Discussion?
Dr. Irucci, up here it says Meta School Bus Bids to add two buses for a total of four purchases. What's that mean?
We had originally passed a while ago saying we only, we're going to get two buses. Then the state bus bid, the state bus funding came in and they funded us for four buses. So we're just re-passing this from two to four.
Okay, so we originally, the board had originally already done two, and now we're, we have enough funding to do four?
Correct.
Okay.
Yep.
Thank you.
All right. Call the roll, please.
Mr. McKenna?
Yes.
Mr. Wibling?
Yes.
Mr. Ratliff?
Yes.
Mrs. McKay?
Yes. Item F, Literacy Curriculum, $593,990.84. This is with ESAR funds and general funds. Superintendent recommends entering into a five-year agreement for elementary reading curriculum, professional development, and resources with Amplify for CKLA Core Knowledge Language Arts. Do I have a motion, please?
So move.
I'll second. We've had discussions. Does there need to be any more?
Yeah, when it has the budget sources, ESAR funds and general funds, do we know how much is, how much is from each fund or not generally?
So, uh, what I can tell you is that after fiscal year '24, the items have to come, the portion of the purchase that comes after fiscal year '24 needs to come from the general fund because ESAR funds end and we can't pre-purchase. I don't know, I don't know if Ben knows. I think most of, the majority of the purchase is at, at the beginning. So I would say, if I were going to guess, I would tell you probably 350 to 400 is going to be ESAR. The rest would be general. But, but we did have the curriculum budgeted for that in the general fund also.
And then it, whenever those run out, it'll be 100% general is what I'm.
So after five years, so wherever, whenever this curriculum deal is done, then that would. then that would be general fund because there would be no more ESSER funds after that. And prior to ESSER, it would have, all came out of general, so, yeah.
And 2024 was the year that you said?
The end of 2024 is the last year of ESSER. I would say with some creative thinking, some of fiscal year '25's materials might be able to be purchased in '24. But it, it'll depend on how the invoice is presented to us and how we can do that, so.
Great question. Thank you. All right.
I just want to add in a discussion that I, in giving due regard to Mr. Wibbling and Mr. Ratliff's position on this, I think we're headed for a two-two vote. And I understand that perfectly okay. I just wanted to repeat my position that we need to get this in place. And the folks that I've talked to want to have something. And that's important to them. Timing is everything on this. I also want to say that in due regard to your comments, if we go back to the committee and they change their mind about which one, I want to respect the process. I can't make, I'm not in a position to be any better qualified than they are to make the decision about which program we go with. And so, to me, I'm honoring in my vote the position of the committee and the duty we gave them, the assignment we gave them. And I think it is a slap in the face to them if we, we don't honor their position. So, that, that's my position on it, but I understand yours as well.
Yeah, I, you know, I understand that, but, and you said for me to go back to committee. I think Mr. Wibbling's asking to go back to committee, not necessarily me. But this is not unheard of for boards, or councils, or Congress, or anything, to send something back to committee with new ideas and ask them to evaluate those new ideas. But this was really Mr. Wibbling. I was just asking for more time to evaluate the current situation, knowing they had that recommendation, and asking for the fifth board member to be here while we vote on this because it's so important. I'm not asking it necessarily to go back to committee. I understand what their recommendation is. So, I'm not necessarily turning it down either. I'm just asking for more time.
Can I ask a question? I know you, can you, can you give me some ideas, maybe of exactly what those specific things you're looking for so I can go back? You know what I mean? If you want to write them down or send them?
Yeah, absolutely. The big thing to me is the potential split between the grade bands. Am I using the correct terminology there? That's, yeah, so if, if that could just be revisited, and then, again, I don't know if it was considered and that the teachers, well, hey, I never thought about that.
My understanding from what he said tonight, he's basically saying this Amplify for CKLA seems to be working for primary phonics, right?
That's the strength of it, the knowledge base.
And that third, fourth, and fifth would then go to a wonders-based system due to the problems he's seeing in CKLA. That's the way I took it.
And I'm not qualified to determine where, if that split were to take place, where, I just, again, I just said the K through two because that's what was presented. And I know there's.
Yeah, we, we actually had that, we had that conversation. So, I, we can, we can, you know, revisit it with the, with the committee and get some feedback from them as well.
Thank you.
All right. Veronica, call the roll, please.
Mr. McKinnis?
Yes.
Mrs. McKay?
Yes.
Mr. Ratliff?
No.
Mr. Wibbling?
No.
Motion fails. Chromebooks. Expensive, $230,032, it's budgeted. Superintendent recommends approving a purchase agreement with IT Savvy for 800 Chromebooks as below. And I'm not going to read all that. I'm tired. Nine o'clock's my bedtime, folks. Anyway, um, do I have a motion to approve?
So move. Second.
Discussion?
Yeah, Dr. Irucci, the 800 number, is that just the amount we think we need? The amount we can afford? Where's the 800 come from?
I believe that's what we budgeted for, for, so we've, we've, we've tried to, we're trying to develop a rotation for these Chromebooks, too, so that we're not all buying them at the same time. We're replacing the ones. And I think that's what Tabitha is recommending, that we, as far as the rotation is concerned. I can tell you, we, we struggled to get three people to actually give us pricing because of the supply chain issue, too.
And then, and then the, this is all, the Chromebooks with the Chrome OS license, do we know how, is that forever the license on that? Do we know?
It's for the length of the life of the Chromebooks. And I think it's seven years is the estimate.
They guarantee seven, but they're getting, they're getting a little bit more out of this.
And you had previously said this comes from even to you by a recommendation from a department head or something? Yep, okay, thank you.
We actually did a, all competed a bit on this, and so it went on the market.
Thank you, yep.
Great. All right. All right, please call the roll.
Mr. McKinnis?
Yes.
Mr. Wibbling?
Yes.
Mr. Ratliff?
Yes.
Mrs. McKay?
Yes. Motion carries. Subject H. Train Chiller Purchase for $510,772. Superintendent recommends waiving competitive procurement based on urgent necessity and public, public exigency and approving the selection of Train US Inc. for the district Grant Middle School Chiller Replacement Project. The superintendent and treasurer recommend that the board declare an urgent necessi, ness, oh, man. Urgent necessity and public, yeah. Waive competitive bidding and approve the selection of Train US Inc. for the installation of a new 450-ton train air-cooled chiller and related improvements at the Grant Middle School. And there you see the rationale. I believe this is 50 months out?
Fifty-two weeks, I believe is where we're at right now.
I'm sorry. All right. So, do I have a motion, please? I'll make the motion. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Discussion?
Yeah, with this, we're trying to, to get in the, as I understand it, get in the supply line, I guess. Is that what we're doing?
Correct.
Yeah, we originally were told when we started this project that, you know, chillers are probably going to be six, eight weeks out, you know, to get the materials. But as we kind of went through this and made sure that, you know, all of the things that we needed to do were necessary, you know, we're getting to the point now where we're just, it's, that's why we asked for the emergency.
Yep, and when you say a chiller, we're talking about an air cooling system?
Yes.
Does it have the ability to filtrate the air as well, or no?
Well, I believe it improves the airflow because our chiller is inefficient. And so, that is a part of what Train has told us in relation to that. By no means an expert on air exchange.
Yeah, I mean, it just says through COVID-19 and line item one, COVID-19 through increases in air quality throughout the middle school building. So, that's not really filtering the air, it's just flowing the air.
I believe it's about airflow, yes. I do not, it is, does not have a filtration, other than the normal filters that we have, you know, the HEPA filters that we have within the system.
Do we know if we can put a filtration system in this, or no?
I can find out.
All right. Do I have a motion?
You do.
Oh, I did have a motion, I'm sorry. Apologize. All right, call the roll, please.
Mrs. McKay?
Yes.
Mr. McKinnis?
Yes.
Mr. Ratliff?
Yes.
Mr. Wibbling?
Yes.
Motion carried. An SEL screener is item I for $35,508.29. Superintendent recommends entering into a contract with Illuminate Education for an SEL screener from 4/1/22 to 6/30/2024. Do I have a motion?
So move.
Second.
Second.
All right, discussion?
Would the purpose of this screener, and again, it was weeks, probably months ago, given the book Teacher's Guide to Trauma, and I took a lot of notes during it. My big question was, how do we identify our traumatized kids? Would this be one of, or their primary, that's my assumption, their, their job?
It's considered a best practice now that we have SEL standards is to, you know, kind of like you do with a literacy screener, it's the same thing. So, we can help teachers identify, you know, the needs of their students within the classroom. So, we actually looked at about seven or eight of those. And then, the SEL pillar team gave some feedback. They narrowed it down to three. We got some pricing from all three. They were pretty competitive pricing-wise, but I think one of the main reasons is because it's affiliation with EduClimer is that, you know, all that information is easily going to be at the teacher's fingertips through EduClimer. And that's, that's, they were all pretty much the same. I think Savers was kind of in the middle with the amount of, like, the frequency of the SEL screener is typically twice a year. So, at the beginning and the end of the year, you want to give that. A couple of them recommended three times a year, but, and then there were some that were just like 70 questions. We don't need that, right? Because that's way too much, so.
All right. Call the roll, please.
Mr. Wibbling?
Yes.
Mr. McKinnis?
Yes.
Mr. Ratliff?
Yes.
Mrs. McKay?
Yes, motion carried. All right, we come to the consent calendar. Consent calendar approval. All matters listed under the consent agenda are considered by the board to be routine and will be enacted by the board in one motion in the form listed below. There will be no discussion of these items prior to the time the board votes on the motion unless members of the board, staff, or the public request specific items to be discussed and removed from the consent agenda. Superintendent recommends approval of all consent agenda items. Employment is specifically conditioned on and subject to successful background checks, receipt and final administrative review of all application records, and receipt of all other necessary documentation. All matters listed are considered to be routine and enacted by the board. Do I have a motion?
I, I would like the consent to remove, or at least talk about Ms. Folsnall and Ms. Lutz.
If we're going to talk about personnel matters, I'd move to go into executive session.
I'll second. Discussion?
I, my, sorry, my hesitation is I have, because again, we're about to do administrative hire like we did before. I have in my hands three evaluations. I would feel comfortable voting on those. And obviously, you know.
Go ahead and do that. Do you want to go ahead and we'll, we'll do the administrative contracts?
No, if you want to do executive.
Oh, executive session, I'm sorry. So, it sounds like we need to go into executive.
And that's where I'm not necessarily talking personnel itself, but I've read the evaluations. I got those three, and that's.
Okay. So, we'll go into executive session?
Mr. McKinnis?
Yes.
Mrs. McKay?
Yes.
Mr. Wibbling?
Yes.
Mr. Ratliff?
Yeah.
Okay, motion carried. So, we're going into executive session, so there will be action after we're back. But I think, do we want to go to a different room?
We can go in the high school office.
Okay, so we're going to go into the high school office, and we shall return. We're back.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent calendar.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All right, discussion? Call the roll, please.
Mr. McKinnis?
Yes.
Mr. Wibbling?
Yes.
Mr. Ratliff?
Yes.
Mrs. McKay?
Yes. Motion carried. All right, so that takes us to almost the end. All right.
There is action on, on the board meetings, just to add the ones that we have talked about.
Add.
This next, the future board meetings, I do have a motion on there to add those.
Okay. All right, we're getting there. The future board meetings?
Yeah.
Okay, so we're at item 11. Future board meetings. So, here we go. It is recommended to add additional special meetings on April 8th at 4:00 p.m. at Executive Drive, 100 Executive Drive for the purpose of reviewing applications for Board of Education members. No action will occur. A special meeting on April 11th to interview potential board candidates. And if necessary, a second meeting on April 14th to interview candidates. These meetings will be held at Harding High School at 5:00 p.m. in the community room, correct? So.
Need a motion to approve those meeting dates?
Yeah, I think, I think they're in the media center.
Media center?
I would like to, so we just have it on record that.
So, I so moved for those special board meetings.
All right. Call the roll, please.
Mr. McKinnis?
Yes.
Mr. Wibbling?
Yes.
Mr. Ratliff?
Yes.
Mrs. McKay?
Yes. All right. And the hope is that after either the 14th, or, excuse me, after either the 11th or the 14th, we will come out of executive session and vote to approve the next board member so that that person can be sworn in on the 19th. All right. Committee reports. Do I have any committee reports?
I'd just like to thank Mr. Mullins for joining us, again, to record these. The amount of work you and your kids have put in, the service that you provide your kids and the community, thank you very much. We don't hear that enough, but it's very much appreciated, so, please.
All right. Thank you. Information and discussion items. We talked about having a discussion about what we heard tonight. I don't think we need a motion.
We'll just discuss what you're saying about it?
Sure, I, can we put a time limit up about 10 minutes on this, if we could? Only because I don't function after nine.
We're getting late into the night, I, I get that. But I think what, what has transpired tonight.
Order, please.
What has transpired tonight with teacher, mostly teachers coming in to talk to us concerning what is happening at their building, and possibly multiple buildings, is very concerning to me as a board member, to hear some of the trauma that they're facing. It's very disturbing, especially here at this district and at the elementary level is where we're having these problems. Obviously, this is not, maybe back in my day where we could scoop a kid up pretty quickly and put his hands on him, we can't do that. So, I'd like to either move with how we're going to rectify the situation, whether we need to have more meetings, have a committee look at this, or something. Obviously, this board has a, has the power to investigate anything like that and inform any committee to do that outside of superintendent advisory committees. So, I'm, I'm making a motion that we actually try to, and maybe not tonight, but try to look into doing a full investigation of what's going on and what can be done. Because obviously, our staff is screaming for answers. We're not really providing that. And I understand there's a whole bunch of complications when it comes to discipline kids by the law within policies and so forth. So, I don't expect this to be a 10-minute meeting and we have a solution.
I don't.
I don't, I don't.
I don't either.
I don't expect that. But we have to do something and be moving to do something, just because, you know, what we're hearing tonight and what we've heard when we go into buildings and, you know, I'm sure everybody wants to fix the problem. But we have to do something and be moving to do something, just because, you know, what we're hearing tonight, and what we've heard when we go into buildings, and, you know, I'm sure everybody wants to fix the problem, I don't think anybody wants to say we want this happening. But it is a complicated issue, and we need to move forward with some kind of schedule on how we're going to handle this, whether it's special meetings, whether it's investigative committees, or some, some form, and I'm open to about anything on how to do, you know, do this kind of, of work.
We could do a task force.
Well, I, I agree a hundred percent with you, and I'm dismayed to hear those things, and I've witnessed them, I've been at TAF visiting and saw an episode or two, and I think that, you know, I wrote down after this, what's, what is the solution? And I certainly don't have it, but I'd like to ask those questions of others who might, and, you know, it, it's a tough one. You, you mentioned the law that applies to, we just can't spell kids haphazardly, we have to have a process and, and all of that, and so, it is a tough one, I, I thought, well, maybe at TAF we just hire some off-duty policemen and put them down each hall for a month and see if that doesn't help the situation, or, you know, get more support there somehow, I, I don't, I don't know.
Yeah, my only issue with that is these kids aren't necessarily criminals, they're having behavioral issues, I think we got to address it, but I think what is happening is when we're addressing the one individual that needs the help, we're forgetting about the twenty-some other behind the child, as well as that adult in the room.
Right.
So I think we're, for lack of better, the stories that I'm hearing, we're at least addressing the kid that has the problems and trying to help him. I think we're forgetting about the rest of the room as we try to address the single issue.
And, and Dr. Iarussi has recommended that we have in each building, I don't know what your word was, cooling off room. A de-escalation room, where these students can go and have somebody that knows how to do that and has experience in de-escalation.
And that, that obviously is an idea that needs to be explored and, as well as others, I don't, I don't know the true. I, I mean, if that obviously would give an effective thing, and I, I don't know what your thoughts are, Dr. Iarussi.
Well.
And I understand you're just speaking off the cuff right now, because we've heard it tonight.
No, no, that's all right, I mean, we, we've had conversations about this ongoing, we had our district labor management meeting today again, and I heard, you know, from the executive committee again about different things that are going on, and, and what we can and can't do, and, you know, when we talked about these systems that are in place to allow for conversations to happen in each building, obviously, we're not getting the outcomes from those that we need to get. So that's, whatever, whatever needs tweaked within there, or whatever we have to do differently, and some of those kinds of things, we have to do. I, you know, to be the first to admit, I'm, I'm listening to these, these instances, and there's seven or eight teachers talking about two or three kids that are in their classrooms, which comes out to quite a few kids that are displaying behaviors that I've never seen out of little kids, other than those that maybe, you know, have some other issues, but it sounds like we're having issues in these kinds of things with kids that typically don't, or haven't portrayed those kinds of things. So, you know, my first thought always goes back to somewhat what you said is, you know, how are we going to fix these problems with, within the building when we have these kids during the day, and we know that obviously there's some issues that lead to that. I mean, again, I'm looking at, we follow suspension numbers and expulsion numbers, and we're over the charts, and we're off the charts with the amount of kids that we've suspended and expelled this year, and obviously, that's not something that we want to, we want to do either, you know, is, is put the kids into a situation again where they're, you know, not, not, they have no chance of being successful. So, I'm, I'm all ears, and, and I'm willing to, to, to listen and talk about, you know, what, what we need to, what we need to do, if we need to bring in some other folks that, that might have some other ideas about that, now's, now's the time to definitely do that. And I know, you know, and our, our principals want, they don't, you know, they don't want to see our teachers go through these kinds of things.
Well, I, you know, from my perspective, we just had a whole committee to do this literacy thing, I would like to explore the possibility of doing something similar, because obviously, the teachers are expressing there's a disconnect between them, the layer of administration to you guys, and obviously, I think what you're saying is, I didn't know it was this level until their speaking, so there's a, obviously, a communication barrier where it's not getting fully, maybe the extent of the problem, not really, you don't know what's going on, but the extent that you're hearing. Yeah, the extent that you're hearing and the trauma from the teachers, I think, has affected you tonight, so hopefully, we can get some conversations about how to move forward to address this ongoing issue, that's all. And I think that was good, and I appreciate all of them showing up to tell us.
And I think a task force might be a, a start, it's certainly not the solution, but.
Yeah, I mean, I'm, I'm sure some of the teachers in the field have ideas on what we can do, I mean, some of them have been here and seen different disciplines through their time here, so I don't know what might work, and then, you know.
And I, I know we're all concerned about, I mean, I don't want to see a teacher slapped, kicked, punched, none of us want that, and, and I see, I mean, it traumatizes our teachers as well, and I fully understand that, and, and we have to, you know, it's a, it shouldn't be a balance, you know, the kids versus teachers, it should not, and, but we need to make sure everyone is safe, everyone's getting what they need from us, and I think a task force at this point would be something, and I can talk with Dr. Iarussi about that, and then we can reach back out to you and to teachers, and, you know, try to, try to get, I wouldn't, I wouldn't think this would be a huge committee, but maybe ten people.
No, but I'm hoping by next board meeting, we can have something either started, or something to approve, to go in and try to head this off before the next school year, because we got, you know, we got some time before the next school year.
And you hate the word consultant. I don't like hiring consultants either, but we may not be seen, because we're blind to some of the things that could be done. If we need to bring some outside help in, or look at other districts that are facing the same situation, let's talk to them, you know, that's, that's.
I appreciate that, however, I think from what they're telling us, they don't feel heard, and I don't know that we're hearing them, meaning, well, the full, the full thing's getting up to where it needs to be to make the changes, that's why I'm saying.
But that's all I'm saying.
I, I don't, yeah, I don't think, I don't think we've fully explored it on our own to bring in consultants, I think we have years of experience out here in the audience, as well as here at tables, that can possibly figure this out on our own before we start spending money on people.
I don't disagree with that, but I don't, I don't leave any, any box unopened.
Yeah, no, this, this needs addressed, no matter what, you know, moving forward, this has to be addressed, I mean, this is.
If you, I'm going to jump in here, I like the words investigate and, and explore, but to me, that implies, and, and it's on us, you know, as the board, and I, we've been to the buildings, and, and we need to go back. The intent behind a task force and a committee, I think, is good, but I have a feeling that the staff, when they hear that, it's just one more body that will discuss things. The task needs to actually be performed. I've been saying for a while now, and our student code of conduct, I'm just going to read a couple lines, "The Board of Education acknowledges that conduct," this is fifty-six hundred, "The Board of Education acknowledges that conduct is closely related to learning. An effective instructional program requires an orderly school environment, and the effectiveness of the education program is in part reflected in the behavior of students. The Board believes that the best discipline is self-imposed, and that students should learn to assume responsibility for their own behavior and the consequences of their actions. The Board has zero tolerance of violent, disruptive, or inappropriate behavior by students." And it continues on fifty-five hundred, "Again, the Board of Education has zero tolerance of violent, disruptive, or inappropriate behavior by its students. If this student code of conduct exists, and it truly is up to date, it needs to be enforced in a legal manner, I understand that there are stipulations that we must follow. If it's not up to date, that's on us, it needs to be reviewed, and that's, if we're going to review anything, it, it's, is our student code of conduct up to date or not, if not, why, and how do we get it up to date? And is it truly being enforced on the ground line, right, and that's, and if there are legal ramifications, and turn, hey, we can't do this, and the teaching staff needs to know, we can't do this legally, and we got to show them the law that prevents us from doing it, but that still doesn't solve the problem, which I, you know, I'll admit that, we still have to get, we have to curb the behavior, and that hasn't happened yet, and, I mean, I don't have to rehash everything that was said here tonight. But it was one of the reasons why I left, there are many reasons why I left EduC, I'm one of those people saying, well, we're going to keep, I'm one of them, I'm one of them, it was a discipline issue that caught, that was last straw, I said, I'm out, I'm done, I'm not doing this anymore, and I won't be here as it gets even worse. It needs to be addressed and not just discussed. We do have conversations coming, and I don't know about people, but, and I appreciate the willingness to get down deep to the people who deal with it on a daily basis, and it causes them to not sleep at night, I've, I've been there. You don't want to go back the next day, and you can't wait to get out at the end of the day, but you love the kids, and you love what you do, but it's having an impact on your career and your family, and it's just not fair.
But what I, what I'm asking for, Mr. Weidling, and, and the rest of the board members, what I'm asking for is we look into doing the investigative part of the board powers, so they report directly to us, not necessarily advisory committee, that we don't know what's going on. Because I think this issue, I think if you look at our, we could create pretty much any committee that we want and how we want, and that's what I'm asking for in the future to explore.
Bullying didn't even come up.
To explore that policy on how that committee can be formed by us as the board to look into this, then they would be reporting to us their findings, so we would, as a board, be on top of what's going on and not hearing it later than we should, because I would like this to be addressed and, and squashed as much as we can, as quickly as we can, is why I'm asking for that measure, I guess.
Yeah, if it's a board-created committee, it would have to be a public session, yeah, and that's okay.
Yeah, well, I, and I, I think it's relevant not only, I mean, for the public to know, but these people to know what's going on, and have assurances that we're moving, and not just kind of getting lost in rhetoric and so forth, so that's why I'd like to explore that, so.
All right, so, do you guys have a problem if I just talk with Ron, and then we'll, we'll get, we'll get a plan to move forward?
No, 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 I have no, hopefully, by next meeting, we have some plan on how to move forward on it, yep, I have no problem with that.
All right, okay. All righty. Anything else come for the board? I'm just being polite here, I really don't want anything coming for the board, I'm tired, I've said that enough times. All right. I don't believe we have any reason to go into executive session. So do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
I will second.
Thank you. All those in favor, there you go. You got us?
Thank you.
All right, thank you all for coming, safe travels home.